Councilmember Williams is out of town and will not be joining us this evening. Are there any council comments or announcements this evening? Any comments or announcements?
Yes, I want to congratulate the folks in the Economic Development Office, particularly Ilana, who gave a very good presentation on last Thursday at the SHA, sorry, the Crossroads Development Authority meeting. And the focus of her comments was mainly on beautification of the area. And she made a number of very worthwhile points, one of which was the crime prevention ingredient in how a neighborhood looks to the outside world and how the business community looks to the outside world. And she talked about the obvious things like graffiti, rundown storefronts, garbage and litter on the streets. Not only does it have an effect on the property values of the community, but it also has an effect in deterring or attracting criminal elements to that area. And on a brief walk this past Saturday morning, I probably collected about 10 pounds of garbage in the immediate area where I live, in Ward 6. And this is not New Hampshire Avenue, but it's in the neighborhoods. And like an archaeologist pulling things out of a bag, the items in that bag were of great interest to me. One was several empty beer bottles that were found on front lawns and on curbs. And this indicates the problem with public drinking. And I know the police department is doing a very good job cracking down on that. The chief is here tonight, and I congratulate him and his officers for taking a very hard line with drinking in public. And then I also pulled out some yard signs that had fallen off of telephone poles, and then they'd blown into the middle of the street. These are neighbors who are doing things such as yard sales, and they're also professional businesses that put up these flyers on telephone poles throughout the area. They never take them away. And anybody who's been down New Hampshire Avenue recently will see what looks like a forest of them. And then the third category of archaeological findings was just the amount of trash in general that you will find all over the place. And my view is that we're losing the battle to maintain some sections of the city and make them look decent so as to, in particular, not only for aesthetic purposes, but also to make sure this does not send the wrong message to the wrong group of people. So what I hope is that the residents of the area, in tandem with the city manager and city employees and the police department, will continue to take a very hard line on what's happening in the neighborhood, and that we'll work together to try to clean the place up. It's a big, big problem over there. I see it getting worse, and it's going to take a concerted effort, mayor, colleagues, and the city manager, to bring this under control. And we've made some progress in the last couple of weeks, couple of months, but there's much more to be done. And I hope we can set our sights on that goal and battle this problem of urban blight and litter and gang graffiti and get rid of it. Thanks.
Any other comments? Yes.
I just wanted to remind everybody, I reminded my constituents, but I wanted to remind everybody to watch out for unusual things that are happening in your neighborhood and not to be afraid to report things to the police. They want to hear from you if they think something unusual is going on. If you see somebody who's walking through, cutting through the backyards, or if you think somebody's trying to rattle a door on your house at night, and you go there and nobody's there, it's really okay to call the police and to let them know. We have to watch out for each other and stay vigilant. And the other thing I want to say is that it's coming into the hot season, and I'd also like to remind everybody to watch out for the elderly folks in your community. Heat is one of the big causes of death of elderly folks in the summer, and so just remind everybody to keep an eye out for your friends and your neighbors and check in with them to see if you can help them out if they need any assistance. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. One is, since I will not be able to attend next week's council meeting, I want to be sure to reinforce my views that the resolution that will be taken up next week to impeach both President and Vice President of the U.S., I do support, so I hope that that passes. I would also like to point to a demonstration that's coming up on July 31st where the city is reviewing a method of counting paper ballots. And that's July 31st at 7:00 PM. Is that in this room, or?
In the community center.
Okay, so that's in the community center in the Azalea Room. And I think that's also timely since the city's elections are coming up in November. I have something of a political announcement to make, which we don't usually spend much time doing here, but on Wednesday I will be announcing my intentions in the Ward 1 race. If anyone would like to attend, it is at 6:00 PM at Middle Eastern Cuisine, and it would be nice to see you. The last thing I want to say is I appreciate very much that as we do have crimes occurring in the city, some of a very upsetting nature, such as the one on Lincoln on Friday night, or the 4:00 AM helicopter circling last night, I very much appreciate the police department's quick and informative bulletins about that. I think that is enormous service to the community and a welcome change in the last year, so thanks very much.
I wanted to piggyback on what Doug said and also note that the staff put together a very good presentation and tour for the property owners of properties on New Hampshire Avenue on Tuesday, which covered a lot of the issues and concerns, and also, I think, was the beginning of what I hope will be a productive working relationship between those property owners and the city's economic development staff in order to try and make those properties along New Hampshire Avenue not just more attractive, but also more productive from economic development standpoint. After the presentation, I heard nothing but good things from the people who had attended it, and I wanted to thank the staff for putting on such an excellent presentation. I wasn't able to go on the bus tour, but I think, even though it took place in the pouring rain, I heard that it was very constructive also. So I think the staff is continuing to work very hard on the council's directive to them to try and encourage economic development in the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. So I very much appreciate that on the staff's part. We do not have any additional agenda items, so the next item on the agenda would be the public comment period. Now, this would not, this is not the public hearing on the rent stabilization issue. This would be on public comments on other issues. We will take up the public hearing on the rent stabilization issues after we've had a presentation by the attorney who drafted that statute, so that everybody has, you know, at least that much understanding of what it is that we're looking at. So this is public comments on items that are not on the agenda, meaning not dealing with rent stabilization, but any other item that you would like to come before the council. And I would ask when you come forward, this will also be the rule during the rent stabilization hearing, for you to identify yourself and for you to keep your comments to three minutes. Those same two rules will apply during the public hearing on rent stabilization also. But now is the time for comments not on rent stabilization. Are there any public comments on other issues? Why don't you go up to the podium there?
Thank you, Mayor and the City Council. I don't mean to be number one today, but it happens to be. I thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council. It was about two months and a half ago I heard on NPR that the city of Tacoma Park has been number one, chosen as number one as the best-run city for fiscal management and efficiency. This nomination was done by one Canadian firm, and I haven't followed that much. Thank you for making us feel good, for all the residents of Tacoma Park, and I thank you, the mayor and city council. My second point, I have three minutes, is to thank the Tacoma Park Foundation for giving us, for the Tacoma Park Community Action Group, to carry this survey. This survey was done by Tacoma Park Community Action Group. Housing problem, childcare, job, all very relative issue. Terry Simon, our chairman, he's sitting there, and with his help and the Tacoma Foundation grant of $1,000, with the dedication of Tacoma Park, you know, citizens group, we were able to compile this. This would be very useful for all of you, so that is done by Community Action Group. And I would like to thank the Tacoma Park Foundation for the $1,000. $1,000 can do a good job if people work hard on it.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Franco Brilliant, and I'm here representing the Tacoma Park Foundation. And I just want to say that this is the kind of thing that Tacoma Park Foundation does. It's a community foundation, which means that we are from the community, giving back to the community, doing things like supporting the wonderful work of the Tacoma Park Community Action Group. And we can always use more volunteers and more support to do more great stuff in the community. So please, either come see me or look us up on the web, tacoma park community foundation.org. Thanks very much.
My name is Douglas Portier. I live at the Flower Avenue Apartments on Flower Avenue, which is owned by the Montgomery Housing Partnership. Some of you may know the Montgomery Housing Partnership. They are a nonprofit development corporation that rehabilitates buildings in the county. They utilize a federal program known as the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. This program takes dilapidated buildings and renovates them for low-income tenants. It allows working-class people like me to live in places that are safe and sanitary. The only problem is that some organizations like MHP abuse the program by acquiring properties that aren't dilapidated and therefore not in need of rehabilitation, like the one they unsuccessfully tried to buy, 719 Erie Street. You should also know that affordable housing with MHP is a myth. The maximum rent that can be charged under the LIHTC program in Montgomery County as of February 2007 for a one-bedroom apartment is $886. Since the Montgomery Housing Partnership won't pay for utilities when you factor in gas, water, and electricity, you'll most likely pay over $1,000 a month, and they call that affordable housing. Although the LIHTC program guidelines specify that 20% or 40% of the tenants must be certified low-income, MHP has consistently misled tenants in my building into believing that there is some kind of legal requirement to get 100% of the tenants certified. The certification process, which requires a person's most private financial documents to be turned over to the cronies at the CT Management Group, is a terrible one. CT is MHP's property manager, the one that mismanaged the property into the ground through multiple code violations, including the broken security lights, which weren't fixed even after Victor Dahl was robbed and murdered in front of 8624 Flower Avenue last year. Their latest humanitarian project is one whereby they attempt to intimidate tenants by sending them letters implying that they will be evicted if they don't certify low-income. Apparently, it's working because eight tenants have already vacated the property. Now, what does this have to do with rent control? Well, while you private landlords have been fighting for rent control, to change rent control for years to get a few scraps, the Montgomery Housing Partnership has rolled into Tacoma Park rather recently, buying properties while receiving a full-course meal from the city in the form of total exemption from rent control, even for its market rate units, and a five-year exemption from property taxes. Now, if you're a tenant or landlord that's waiting for the city government to do something, I've got some advice for you. Don't hold your breath. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else on the topic that's not rent stabilization?
I'm Lisa Moscatella. I live at 6618 Cockrell Avenue, and I just want to remind everybody here about what was mentioned earlier, about next week, there's going to be a vote here on an impeachment resolution to impeach Cheney, Vice President Cheney and President Bush. And I looked on the city council website to see if there was a text of the resolution, and I'm not sure, because I wanted to be able to refer people to it. Is there a place that I could?
There isn't yet.
Okay.
I'm talking to some folks about the rent stabilization, the draft that we've got, but I'm hoping we can get it up within the next day or two.
Okay. And we have a website, it's...
I'm sorry, I meant impeachment.
Yeah.
The site Rent Stabilization, I got it on my brain.
Well, there's a website, if anyone's interested in knowing more about what we've been doing, it's at tacoma park IBC dot wordpress dot com, and there's a lot of information there about what's going on here in the city and also around the country. And this past Friday, there's a really informative program on PBS on Bill Maher's journal where he had to, one constitutional scholar, Bruce Fein, and another author, John Nichols, to talk about the ramifications of not undertaking this possibility of future imperial presidencies and the erosion of our Constitution. So please come next week, 7:30, and be part of it and tell everybody you know. Thanks very much.
All right. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
My name is Michael Morelli. Just a question. In this impeachment process, can we include the former Secretary of Defense, Rumsfeld, and some of his aides, and also Mr. Wilfowitz?
I don't think you can impeach people who are no longer in office. All right, seeing no one else, we will move on to the next item, which is the city manager's update.
Thank you. Just a few quick items. I know there's a lot of people in the audience for the rent stabilization items. I did want to mention to the council that James F. Knott Construction was on-site today to deal with some of the ongoing problems with stormwater. I'm not sure how far along they are in their work, but I hope we all have some more information next week. Hopefully, by that time, they'll be complete, actually. Also, I wanted to note that both Mayor Porter and Councilmember Barry did allude to the council priorities and the work that we're doing, both in economic development as well as the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. And there were two items I just wanted to mention to the council and to the community relative to that process. Each of the council members should have included the, got a copy of the latest edition of the Eat Tacoma, which is basically a dining guide. So if any of the residents are interested in that, you can visit the Housing and Community Development Department. Also, I wanted to update the council on the work that we're doing in terms of design charrettes. In the latter part of April, the council approved a contract with TND Planning Group for the Ethan Allen Gateway Charrette, and the council also included funding in this year's budget to continue that design work further along the corridor with the Maryland Gateway. And I wanted to mention to the council that the staff has been talking to TND Planning Group about possibly extending the scope of their contract to also do the Maryland Gateway work. We thought that might tie those two areas together and might be a cost-effective way of getting both areas studied and getting the community's input. Ms. Daines, our Housing and Community Development Director, has indicated that that can be done within the 25% contract extension authority that I have by the code. So if there's no concern on the part of the council, we will proceed with basically extending TND Planning's group contract. I think this will be a very cost-effective way and should result in some fairly significant savings.
I think that's a good idea. I would suggest that you consult with Councilmember Williams when he gets back also, since that the Maryland Gateway is adjacent to his ward.
I'll do that. And the last thing I wanted to do is give Chief Recuci an opportunity to update the council and the community on a number of items. Obviously, there was a serious crime that occurred over the weekend, and I think he'd like to address that matter, as well as give the council an update on two projects, which is the upgrading of our radio system as well as the possible installation of speed cameras.
On July 2nd, we instituted using our new computer-aided dispatch system, the system which is part of a larger system used by Montgomery County Police, Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, Fire and Rescue for Montgomery County, Rockville City Police, and Gavisburg City Police. This new system now allows for more coordinated communication between the public safety departments and is obviously improving the service to our citizens here in Tacoma Park. It also allows our officers, all the officers now having their cars, mobile data computers, which allows them to get quicker responses on stolen check-wanted persons. We've improved our data entry. We have a window-based system now, which allows us for faster, more accurate data entry. We have our units using GPS technology. We can see where they are at all times and dispatch them to the call that's closest to the car in question. We are now using an integrated county-wide system, which allows for rapid sharing of vital information relating to calls and lookouts, which I'll explain how it's already working for us. We can now share events with both the county police and the county fire department electronically. With just a hit of a computer, we can be talking back and forth with them. We have a mobile interface now that's linked to our computers, which makes for a much faster flow of information. And we have mapping software, which shows everything in the city and where cars are, as I mentioned earlier, gives us our exact boundaries, which is always a little bit of problem when we go in and out between PG County and DC. The system is working good. It's up and running. We have a few more things to implement it, but right now, I would say 90% of the system's up. We're getting some new equipment in the communications room, which is coming in this week and will be put up in the next week. So the investment that I came to you approximately about four months ago is up and running. We're very pleased with the new system. The next thing is, we did have a crime, a home invasion, Friday night, which was on the news, and we've put that through our different notification networks. I want the public to know that we've got an identifiable picture that we got from an ATM where the car was used 45 minutes after the crime on Friday night. We've put that out to the press tonight, and we're confident we'll have an ID shortly, and hopefully, that'll lead to arrest. But I want to thank the community that has called in with information, and I would thank Councilmember Clay for what she stated here tonight. We need the public's help. You see something in your community, please call the non-emergency number 270-1100. It's important that when you see something in your neighborhood, or when you're out shopping, or you're taking your child to school, call us. No call is too trivial. That's how we make some of the bigger arrests that we make, and we really need your help. In this case, we feel this individual was in the neighborhood for quite a long period of time before the crime occurred, and we're kind of confident someone saw this person. Last night, many people got woken up by the helicopter. The good news is, we were able to apprehend two out of three subjects. It was a case of armed carjacking in Bethesda, because our officers were able to monitor Montgomery County's radio system. Montgomery County was following a car, two cars, one which was the hijack car, the other one had an armed subject who was a part of the team that had taken that car. There was eventually a pursuit, which led to two cars crashing, hurting no one in the community, no other property other than themselves. We apprehended two. One got away, but it was a joint effort of Montgomery County, Tacoma Park, Metropolitan PD, Maryland State Helicopter, and Prince George's County Police. So cooperation works, and just the fact that we were able to monitor and the radio systems talked back and forth led to two out of three apprehensions last night. And finally, we have signed a memorandum of understanding with the contractor that's doing the speed cameras in Montgomery County. They will be conducting a speed study for us in the next two weeks, and I hope to report back to you before the end of the month on what we would recommend concerning speed cameras here in the city of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Terry?
Mayor Porter. And also Barb. I think that now that we have the new CAD system, it would be good to have a council discussion of metrics that we could report, have the police department report to the council to do a better job of overseeing the operations of our police department.
Okay, we can talk about that. It will not be before the council's recess.
No, I wouldn't think so. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. I really appreciate the information. I appreciate also the promptness with which you brought it to us. Thank you. Is there anything else? All right. If there's nothing else under the city manager's update, the next thing is the presentation of the proposed revisions to rent stabilization. Sarah Daines, and I believe you're also going to introduce, no, you're not going to introduce anybody.
Dr. Barr and Ken Signan will be joining the council during the work session discussion. Before I begin, I'd like to let the folks in the audience know that we do have a Spanish translator available, Mario Cristaldo. So if anyone is interested in having the discussion translated into Spanish, they should go towards the back of the room. There is a Mario.
Yes. If you would like to listen to this discussion in Spanish, I can't say that in Spanish.
Mario will do that.
Yes. Mario, could you come up to the podium and say what Sarah just said, only say it in Spanish? Because presumably, if there are people here who don't understand English, they won't have understood that announcement either.
Thank you. With that, there are three items that are scheduled for the council's discussion this evening. The first is a brief presentation, and then we'll break for a public hearing, and then during the work session, Dr. Barr can, will be joining the council to address any questions that may have been raised during the public hearing process, to clarify any of the nuances of the ordinance, to clarify any of the questions that may come up at the council level regarding the fair return and process, and to expand on any of the information that was included in Dr. Barr's memorandum, which is part of the agenda packet. We are in the process, or have made, additional copies of the agenda packet, so if anyone did not get a copy, they are now available at the table. With that, basically what I wanted to advise the council and the audience is that this is a two-step process. Tonight, you're going to be looking at a proposed ordinance, which basically sets forth the policy that the council will be adopting regarding rent stabilization or the control of rents in Tacoma Park. The next step that we're beginning now, or have begun, and that we'll be formalizing after the council adopts the ordinance, is the regulation, the promulgation of the regulations, which is basically sort of a more detailed document that sets forth how the ordinance itself will be administered. So when you look at the ordinance, there's a fair amount of detail in it, but it doesn't go into the nitty-gritty, if you will, regarding the petition process or how the forms will look for the rent report, et cetera. That will be part of the regulation step. So while there may be questions or comments that are gathered during the public hearing process, or questions that the council has regarding those particular details, that information will be available following the adoption of the ordinance. We're not prepared to distribute that now because the ordinance has not been adopted, and there may be some fine tuning that needs to be done to address those policy decisions that the council makes. So again, it's a two-step process.
But there is a process, a process of administrative regulations where they're published before they go into effect.
They are published before that.
So people will have an opportunity to see the administrative regulations.
Right. And towards the end of my presentation, I'll do is just briefly go through this, sort of the calendar, the schedule that we anticipate being able to follow, to establish when the ordinance itself will become effective, when the regulations will be available for public comment, and that whole process as far as the promulgation of the regulations. Basically, what I want to do is just briefly review the proposed ordinance that was included in your agenda packet. It's been reformatted since its original inclusion on the city website on July 3rd, I believe. Talk about that fairly quickly, because the primary emphasis of tonight is to gather comments from the public in terms of the ordinance that's been available. What we have done at the staff level is to send out a mailing to tenant associations, distribute flyers to tenants at the various meetings that we've held this last month, and have done a mailing to the landlords, notifying them of the public hearing tonight and of general summary of the larger changes. hearing tonight, and of general summary of the larger changes that have been proposed, and to advise them of how they could get copies of the ordinance. So hopefully, everybody's been made aware of this. There was also a notice on the city's website, as well as a notification in the city's newsletter regarding the hearing tonight. I also want to talk briefly about the utility allowance surcharge, or the utility surcharge that is not included in this ordinance, but is part of the FY08 budget, and then go over the schedule that we're looking at as far as the adoption of the ordinance and the promulgation of the regulations. As far as the proposed ordinance itself, it's fairly straightforward, and I'll just go through it fairly quickly. There have been some significant changes, and then there are a number of aspects of the rent stabilization ordinance that have not been changed. They've been clarified a little bit, so they're easier to understand, but the basic requirements have not been revised. We've essentially broken out the ordinance into three different categories, where the first, which is the application of rent stabilization, sets forth, basically states that rent stabilization applies to everyone with two exceptions. Buildings that are exempted from rent stabilization without application, and that would be halfway houses, transitional housing, or shelters, owner-occupied group homes, things like that. Those are buildings that do not have to comply with any of the requirements of rent stabilization. We have not added anything to that list. We have, however, established a second category, which is new, and which we haven't specifically spoken about at the council level, but we broke it out to clarify things. There are two types of properties that would be considered buildings exempted from rent stabilization, or excuse me, buildings that would be granted a partial exemption from rent stabilization without application. And that would be buildings that, where we don't regulate the increase in the rent, but we talk about how frequently the rents can be increased for that particular property, which is the current law, and then the notification requirements of those rent increases. We have modified which properties that fall into this category. Previously, it was based on the ownership of the number of rental properties that you owned in Tacoma Park. So if you own more than one unit, regardless of what that unit looked like, anything you owned was subject to all of the requirements of rent stabilization. Based on the comments that we received from the council, that has been changed. Now it's any building on a lot with one housing unit, and that'll be basically single-family houses, townhouses. It would not include condominiums, because there is more than one housing unit within that building. And the reason for that is that as buildings convert over to condominiums, they don't always sell, and landlords will continue to rent them. If we were to exempt condominium units just as a category, you could have an entire building that was converted over to condominiums, but was still basically a rental facility. So what that will mean, and I'm anticipating a question, is that there will be some properties that are currently exempt from rent stabilization, that will now be subject to rent stabilization. So we'll be notifying those properties. So for example, there's a building that Mr. Wasser owns on Lee Avenue, that's been converted over into condominiums. Most of those units are occupied by the tenants, or are occupied by the people that own the units. If any of them were to elect to rent it, under the old law, presuming they didn't own any other property in Tacoma Park that they rented, they would not be required to comply with the rent stabilization requirements. They would now. So you're adding some units, you're taking, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So people who purchase their unit, and then, let's say they leave for two years because they're going off into the foreign service, and want to rent it while they're gone, have to rent it at some rental rate that's dictated from a 1980, 1990 price.
No, it would be whatever the rent is.
They could set it from that point, and then it comes under rent control.
This will also impact properties. Say you have a three-unit building, your mother-in-law lives in one unit, you live in the other, and you've been renting out the third. Based on the current law, that one rental unit that you rent out to a non-family member is exempt from rent stabilization, because it's really the only rental property that you own, or rental unit that you own. With this modification or proposed amendment, because there's more than, because there's more than one rental, excuse me, because there's more than one housing unit within that building, any rental units within that building would now be subject to rent stabilization. So there will be some additional rental units that have not been subject to rent stabilization right now. They may have been in the past, but because of the change in the people that live in the units, they will now be subject to rent stabilization.
It seems like you're saying two different things. If it's an accessory apartment, then that is a second unit within the building. You have a house with the owner that has one unit.
Accessory apartments are completely different.
No, it's not completely different.
Accessory, the ordinance exempts any single building with a single unit, regardless of who lives there, on a single lot, and licensed or registered accessory apartments.
Just as a category.
Okay.
As a category. So the accessory apartments are currently exempt from much of the rent stabilization requirements, except for how frequently they can increase their rent and the notification of current. That will not change. The biggest change that this will have will be on individual condominium units. Some people own six condominium units and rent them out, and are currently subject to rent stabilization. They would continue to be subject to rent stabilization. But because the decision was made to look at the physical structure of the property, rather than the ownership.
But if a building has four units, but only one of those is rented.
Right.
And the rest are occupied by the owner and their relatives, and they don't charge rent for them, that that's still, that single unit would...
Would be subject to rent stabilization.
Based on your interpretation, the way that we have it written at this point.
Right, because you're looking at the building as opposed to the ownership. And frankly, from our perspective, your mother-in-law may live in that apartment this year, and then you decide to rent it out. I mean, it's difficult to track in terms of the tendency of the, of an individual building, or an individual apartment. So by keeping all of those units within that building, under the same category, in that they are required to comply with rent stabilization.
I can only speak for myself, but I think that's an unexpected consequence of this change.
It is an unexpected consequence. When, after the council discussion, we went back and looked at all the different scenarios that this could translate into. And that is the, that is something that has not come up in the conversation, at least not that explicitly.
I thank you for the clarification. That's something we may want to discuss later this evening.
Can you tell me, is the rent thing for that third or fourth unit dated back to whatever it was at 1990 plus, or does that get to reset at this point?
That would be something that we deal with in the regulations. We've had a variety of conversations about it at the staff level, and we're working that out. My recommendation would be that we establish the new base level at the year that this has now gone into effect, rather than having it be retroactive.
But obviously, if it's new on the rental market, it would be set at whatever.
Correct. If it's never been, or under the requirements of rent stabilization before, and frankly, there aren't that many, it would be a new base, base year, or base rent establishment.
Well, but I'm sure you know who I'm talking about. I'm thinking specifically of a unit where somebody purchased a three-bedroom, or a three-unit building, lives in two of the units, has the third as an accessory apartment, got qualified for their mortgage based on the structure that we have now, so their, the rent that they have then on that accessory unit, if that reverted back, would be a significant loss of income.
And technically, that's not an accessory apartment, because it's, but yes.
As an exempt unit, I should say.
It's exempt. So it establishes a new base rent, or base year for those particular properties. So theoretically, if you are renting just one unit in your building, and you haven't had to comply with the requirements of rent stabilization, you have assessed a rent that's sufficient to cover your operating expenses, and that that's a fair base year. So those are the rental facilities that would be granted partial exemption without an application. And then the third category are rental facilities and rental units that can be exempt from the requirements of rent stabilization, under certain conditions with an application. And this is just a continuation of the ordinance that you approved in October of '06. We haven't made any changes to that. The ordinance also looks at annual rent increases, and based on the conversation we've had with the council in the past, that annual rent increase allowance has been increased to 100% of the Consumer Price Index, rather than 70%. We did not make any changes regarding rent increases, or the frequency of rent increases, or the notification requirement. We have included under Section 620.060, banking of amortized rent increases, and there are two categories there. This would be the maximum allowable rent, where you sort of, you didn't necessarily apply the annual rent increase allowance each year, but you still get credit for it for the next tenant. There are two different categories. For those that decide to apply unused rent increase allowances that they did not take prior to 1992, and those that were taken after 1992. 1992 is selected because that's the year when the city more aggressively started collecting annual rent reports, and that's basically the base year that we have for rent data. And landlord could go back as far as '88, but they would have to document the fact that they had not taken those rent increases, and that they would have to get actual authorization from the city. It doesn't happen very often, but it allows us to take that into consideration. And that's already currently in the law now, but we've just broken it out into two separate categories. There's also a section on rent escalator clauses, which allows for rent increases during a 12-month period, to allow for increases associated with the rent increase petition. We've not made any changes in that. We have not made any changes in the annual reporting requirements. And then the largest change is the last section, which deals with rent increases pursuant to a fair return petition process. And again, this is sort of a combination of the current capital improvement rent increase, and the hardship rent increase petition, where it allows the landlord to amortize the cost of any capital improvements through a sort of a hybrid hardship petition process. And it details what the standards are for the petition, lays out some of the submission requirements, identifies how the petitions will be considered by the council, and sets forth some other information that will be clarified even in even further detail in the regulations. And Dr. Barr, if you have any specific questions regarding that, I've asked Dr. Barr to address those during the work session. So that's essentially what the ordinance itself looks like that you're being asked to consider, and that the audience is being asked to comment on tonight. One of the things that the council had looked at doing was to establish a utility surcharge, recognizing that utility costs in the region have gone, have increased significantly in the last year or two. That is not included in this ordinance. As part of your FY08 budget process, we set aside funding to undertake and study or analysis of utility expenses that are incurred by landlords that pay utilities on behalf of their tenants. We're hoping to begin that data collection process with the mailing of the request for the annual rent reports, and we'll be asking landlords to provide the information regarding utility billings for the past 12 months. And would strongly encourage any landlord to submit that information. It'll make the process more accurate, and will allow them to access, assuming the surcharge is approved, the actual surcharge in a more timely fashion. We're hoping to present the recommendations, or the outcome of this analysis, to the council later this fall, and if there are any changes that will need to be taken to the ordinance, we'll walk you through that process, or go through that October, November, December. Depending, a lot will depend on how quickly we get the information that we need from the landlords. And then the last thing I wanted to just go over was the schedule that we've laid out as far as the adoption of the ordinance, what impact that would have on any rent increase petitions that landlords are currently in the process of submitting, or have submitted, and then how it all marries up with the regulations, or the promulgation of the regulations. In your original cover memo, I put down September 1st as being the effective date of the ordinance. And after talking to Dr. Barr today, that may be a little aggressive. So we look at the possibility of the ordinance becoming effective December 1st. That would allow us to promulgate the regulations, and have the regulations in place at the same time that the ordinance itself became effective. What that would mean would be that we would get you the regulations at the end of August, and publish notice of their availability in the September edition of the newsletter, which comes out on August 31st. And there's a comment period that's set forth in the administrative regulations in the ordinance, which allows for public comment for a period of, a minimum of 21 days. If you, if the council gets sufficient comments during that public comment period, and you elect to have a public hearing, you can hold a public hearing on the regulations. And assuming that you were to do that in mid-October, we look to be able to publish a notice of the final regulations in the November newsletter, which then would make the regulations and the ordinance go into effect, or excuse me, December 1st, so that we have your policy adopted, it's effective, and we have the rules in terms of how to administer all of the changes in place at the same time. We've also chatted about how, during this transition period, we should address the capital improvement rent increase petitions that are currently in the queue. And a decision has been made, or a recommendation is made, that we will continue to accept applications for capital improvement hardship, or capital improvement rent increase petitions up until December 1st, which is when the ordinance would go into effect. Which would basically mean that any landlord would have to have their project underway now, in order to pull together the paperwork, and have all the information completed, in order to meet that And if you have any questions, or any clarifying things, we'll be able to address them following the public hearing at the work session.
Something that would be helpful to me is if you could write down those dates, the proposed schedule of the regulations.
I'll make a copy of them during the hearing, and just distribute it.
That would be helpful, I think. Are there any questions of the council for Sarah?
Just one. I also appreciate you bringing up that unintended consequence of expanding rent control to properties that didn't previously have it, and wonder if you could point out the places, you know, maybe during the work session, where we would need to make changes to what's proposed in order to prevent that.
We can talk about it, and see if we can come up with a suggestion in the meantime.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. I think then at this point, the thing to do would be to go ahead and start with the public hearing. I noticed that my timer seems to be turned off. Is there, is there some problem with it? The other thing is that if somebody could bring me the list of people who've signed up to testify, that would be, that would be helpful. There it is. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's on. Oh, well, apparently, one of the council members knocked the plug out of the surge protector, so we had a very easy fix-up here. Thank you. All you had to do was look at it, and it fixed itself. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and start with the people who have signed up to speak, or the people who have signed up. If you've signed up, but you don't want to speak, you can go ahead and pass. And then anyone else who would like to speak, who isn't signed up, may speak after that. And I will apologize in advance if I don't get people's names right, because with my inability to pronounce things, and my inability to read things, sometimes I don't do a good job with your name, and I'll apologize in advance. The first person I have is, I think it's Leslie Daniels. Okay, that doesn't want to speak. Emma Williams?
Thank you very much for allowing me this moment to speak. On the proposed rent increase, my concern is with the utility surcharge. My name is Emma Williams, and I currently reside in Park Ridge Apartments. My name is Emma Williams, and I currently reside in Park Ridge Apartments at 7600 Maple Avenue. And they do pay our utilities, and I'm very grateful for that. If this surcharge goes into effect, my concern is, right now, the heating and air is in very bad disrepair. It could use a complete overhaul, as well as the windows. I probably heat as much, lose as much heat outside the windows as I use to heat my apartment, because the windows are so bad. And my concern is, if I'm paying a surcharge, what kind of regulations would there be in order to have the apartment buildings up to code in terms of the, the energy losing things, such as the heating and air, which my air conditioner does not cut off during the summertime, because it's, it's so poor, as well as during the wintertime, it doesn't cut off, because a lot of my heat is going out the windows, because they're not insulated at all. There's a couple who, that don't close very well. So I would like to see something in regards to the rent increase and this utility surcharge, addressing energy-saving concerns in the apartment buildings, that some sort of, something with the landlords having to, to maybe address energy-saving measures, as well as rental increases. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Tangren, and the next person would be Maxine Hillary, after Mr. Tangren.
Hi. I own and live at 326 Boyd Avenue, and I've been there for about 10 years. And I'm unclear now, after listening to this presentation, whether or not this regulation's going to apply to me or not. I, when I bought the house, it had five apartments in it, and I renovated it so that it had two, one that I live in and one that I rent out. And I have, I think I have raised the rent twice since I've been there. I'm not, I think it's pretty reasonably priced. My tenant is here, she could probably tell you better than I can, but the fact is, I'm not doing it to make a living, I'm doing it because it's there. And the price, the cost of living, especially the property taxes, have gone up a lot. And I'm just making it as it is. And if it turns out that, that I do have to go under rent stabilization, I'm just going to stop renting the apartment. It's actually going to be cheaper. And I, I want you to know that, that if that happens, you're going to, I'm not going to be the only one who stops renting. You're going to lose apartments. And if that's your intent, well then, that's your intent. But I just want you to know that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry. Maxine Hillary, followed by, it looks like Louise Loretta John Burrows. Is that one person? Okay, so, so you don't, so Ms. Burrows, you don't want to speak? Okay, all right. And then, so Maxine Hillary will be followed by Wilma Amanya, I believe? I can't quite read that. But go ahead, Ms. Hillary.
I just want to predicate my statement that I believe landlords, and listening to some of the comments we had prior, some very volatile discussions that we had prior to this hearing started, the points made by the landlords are not lost on me. I mean, people have a right to make a profit, as well they should, and why would you go into business if you weren't planning on making a profit? However, considering that almost any unit, aside from the single-family home in Tacoma Park, will be affected by this, the average home rents for $2,300 a month around here, if you can even find a home. So this is going to affect students, low-income and fixed-income tenants. And it does make the assumption that these people are making, getting a cost of living increase. I don't think that's true for a lot of people. People who paint apartments, bus tables, clean hospital rooms, service domestic workers, including some federal workers, are not receiving cost of living. In fact, in the federal system, they're trying to do away with it. I live in a building where my landlord charges a capital improvement for everything, and while we may disagree as to what a capital improvement is, he does a good job, and I respect him for it. But I think that if they did away with capital improvement, what would force some of these landlords who were getting a hefty raise to do any capital improvements? And if there was a complaint process, it would be pretty backlog, my suspicion is, and there would be pressure on some tenants to not file. They would fear eviction. So I'm concerned with that. And they would have to go through a bureaucratic, or a whole bureaucratic process, when a lot of people, particularly low-income people, students, what have you, are so occupied, trying to make a living, trying to get an education, that this puts one extra added burden. One of the things that I keep saying to myself, and I'm listening to the discussion about impeaching the president and vice president, you know, we're a really unique place, here in Tacoma Park. We don't let in used nuclear waste, we don't allow circuses of wild animals, and we stand steadfast and supportive to bed. We believe in human rights and care about poverty in the developing world. Well, there's poverty right here. The developing world is right here. You know, people on Maple, they're the working poor. They're people who watch your kids and trim your lawns and drive the calves, they care for the elderly at the Sligo Creek Rehabilitation Center, they stay up all night guarding your computer at work, and they clean the table, trains, and wait on tables and work retail. Many of them are highly educated, and a whole lot are trying to be. Then there are the students who are paying some of the highest tuition in history, and don't forget the beginning and mid-level professionals, who still can't afford to buy in Tacoma Park, but are significant contributors to the quality of life. So I ask myself here in the Berkeley of the East, you know, where's the balance here? Where's the compromise? We won't let in a Baja Fresh, or a Banana Republic, or a Trader Joe's, but we think nothing of giving a sweetheart deal to people who own 95 units on Maple, and who are so happy, they're not, they're only too happy to price them so high that sooner or later, the lower the fixed-income people will move out, and they'll be, and they will, the expensive condos will prevail. So, you know, there's legacy owners who, who are paying, you know, mortgages that are very old, and think nothing of renting out a basement to a student at $1,000 a month. So, you know, I would like to remind the policymakers of this city that Tacoma Park counts itself as a fair place, where small-town community can thrive, minutes from the nation's capital. I recognize the need for landlords to turn a profit on, I respect that. I just ask that we adjust the numbers and find a way to ensure that landlords make a reasonable profit, and that affordable housing is more than a buzzword. And that we bring in some business here to offset some of these taxes. Thank you. Let's get back to work and do the right thing.
Thank you. Wilma Amaya, I think, is the, if I'm getting it correctly. Is there anybody here with that name who, would you, would she like to speak? She's going to pass. Okay. Dave Delabadia?
Hi, glad to get an opportunity to speak here once in a while. My name is Dave Delabadia, I live at 213 Manor Circle. I've been an owner-occupying landlord in Tacoma Park since 1972. I have two units that are rentable, and I live in a third, which isn't rentable on your books. I don't know if the council's done any research on owner-occupied four-unit or less buildings, but I think the council should consider them for exemption from rent control. On Thursday of last week, I asked Jean Curd, Sarah Daines, if they had any information compiled on owner-occupied buildings. I was told they were working on that now, and they'd hope to have some information by today. I don't know if the council, council has received any of that information yet. But I'd like to know how many owner-occupied buildings there are in Tacoma Park, and how many there are per ward? Actually, how many would be exempted from rent control after considering that the owner-occupied units weren't available anyway? You must subtract one unit per building, because it won't be rented if the landlord's living in it, so the total units would actually be less than the numbers that were presented at the last meeting you had, which included all four-unit or less buildings. These numbers of units are probably much less than the amount that concerned Mayor Porter in the last meeting, and the numbers that also may satisfy Councilman Sniffer of Ward Five, who was going to receive the most changes in his ward. The owners that occupy their buildings are living in different conditions from the investor-owned buildings. They're living in apartments next to their tenants, and don't have the privacy and quiet of a single-family home. These buildings don't have the same appreciation as single-family homes. In many ways, they're like owner-occupied, these owner-occupied small buildings, very similar to accessory apartments in single-family homes. Actual property values are usually based on the profit and loss statements of a rental building, rather than location, location, location. Usually making a commercial rental property in Tacoma Park a bad investment, because the owner has no right to raise the rents to make the building profitable. If the owner-occupied building, if the owner-occupied building owner wants to sell his property, he not only is selling his investment, he's also selling his home, requiring a much greater disruption in his life compared to the non-owner-occupied building investor, who may sell without a major life interruption, just show up at the settlement table and collect the check. It is much, a much more difficult process for the owner-occupied landlord, who must find another place to live and move all his belongings. Some people just say, "Well, just sell your place and leave." Well, it's not that easy. Maintenance, repairs, and improvements are always getting more expensive, and today's contractors' expenses have increased dramatically over the last five to 10 years. I'm sorry Bruce isn't here, because I think he could attest to that. Most of us must borrow money and pay interest to make major repairs or improvements, but there's no provision to reimburse the landlord for his interest expense through rent increases.
Can you wind up?
I'll, I'll read as fast as I can. The tenants benefit at the expense of the landlord.
But can you just summarize the rest of it for us?
Not really.
Well, how about then I let you finish your statement after everybody else has spoken?
Okay, fire it up.
Okay. I'll make a note to that. Mark Hessel?
My name is Mark Hessel. I have prepared about five pages of preliminary comments on the draft that was released Friday evening, and I've given copies to Sarah Daines and Ken Bar, and I'll send in other copies to the city. But what I want to talk about tonight is some more general comments, and some comments about the substance of what's really going on here. The ordinance, frankly, and I spent two and a half years working for the county council, drafting ordinances. That's what I did. It's very badly written, it's as badly written as the old version was, the current version, although it is a lot better than the one that was originally circulated July 3rd. Given the importance of these provisions and the details of the wording to so many people, I think that's unacceptable. More work needs to be done into making this draft ordinance really do what the council says it wants it to do, and to make it clear and understandable. What I want to focus on now is the big issue. In 17 months of meetings, the mayor and the council members who favor rent control have never answered the following three questions. One, why do you think that it's good public policy to make landlords shoulder virtually all of the financial burden of affordable housing in Tacoma Park? Two, do you consider this fair? Why shouldn't all the residents of Tacoma Park share in this financial burden together? And three, if you were a landlord, what would you do if your rents, the rents you received didn't cover your expenses and mortgage costs? Former council member Elrich referred to affordable housing in Tacoma Park as a moral issue. If any council member can't answer those three questions, then I would suggest that they have a moral duty to vote against continuing rent control as we know it. One possibility is what we call vacancy de-control. Won't hurt any current tenants, they're protected by rent control until they move out voluntarily. Beyond that, you go to market rates. There are other possibilities, including raising fees to create a fund for sustainable affordable housing, that leverages county, state, and federal money. At a minimum, the council should invest a few dollars and some staff time in investigating these possibilities. Finally, I know that this is not standard procedure, but I would ask each council member to clearly state his or her answers to these three questions, possibly during the work session. I think that each council member owes that much to the residents of Tacoma Park, and the landlords that provide rental housing to so many constituents. I would encourage everyone here, and people at home who can still get down during this public hearing, to spend their three minutes to talk about this, and maybe give their own answers to these three questions, because I don't think they've really been addressed.
Can you want to get Ms.?
Yes, I can. A 10-second synopsis of my comments, there are a lot of unintended consequences in the draft that you've got before you. It slows down the entire process of getting rent increases when you invest money in capital improvements, and it lowers the interest rate that landlords can get, in a way that's completely unrealistic.
Okay. Rukia Gilbert? Mario, did you want to make some independent comments? No, you're passing to David Rothman?
Hi, I'm David Rothman. I have some units in the city of Tacoma Park, I also have some units outside, actually Tacoma Park address, but outside the city, which is not subject to rent control. I thought I was signing up to say present and accounted for, but this being America, if you get an opportunity to speak, I guess you're supposed to stand up. It's been a long time since, actually, I've made any kind of comment at one of these hearings about rent stabilization. I've owned property for a number of years, and my parents before me owned property in Tacoma Park prior to rent control, so I know a long history of it. And I, for the last time I got up and spoke, I was reminded of Jefferson's quote of "that government is best which governs least." So I have to echo, I believe it was this gentleman who was just speaking about really the need for the rent control. I, I wonder if the council has, in its discussions, actually looked at the overall purpose or goal of it in the first place. It rents control themselves, in fact. It is impossible for me to rent an apartment that is on the market for more expense than someone is willing to pay for it. The market is self-leveling. I, I also have to comment that I'm disappointed that in the presentation and in the paperwork, I haven't seen any real description of what a fair petition, fair return petition, and I love that it's in quote marks, because that means it's got some special meaning. What is fair? I echo this gentleman's question. What is fair? Now, anything other, in the business world, anything other than fair market value is not fair. And again, I close by saying, the market is self-leveling.
Thank you. Just for your information, there's more description of the fair return process in the attachments to the materials we're working on.
Well, I, I'll need you later tonight, because I don't see it here, and I didn't see anything online just before I came to see.
Well, actually, Dr. Bar will be addressing that also. Solomon Ashagree? All right. It looks like Terry Day?
Terry Day.
Huh?
Terry Day.
It doesn't, it looks like, it looks like Kirkwood. I can't, well, are you signed up? Well, let's see. Oh, I see where you are, but you're at the end, I'm sorry. This is, the last name is clearly Day, D-A-Y. All right. She's passing. Okay, got it. Marcelo Ruricori? I'm sorry if I didn't get that quite right. Is that Rodriguez? Marcelo Rodriguez? No. Okay. Pass. Baldani Tadasi? No. Okay. There's a lot of people who are here, but don't necessarily want to speak. Tobin Hinson? There we go. I know sometimes it's confusing whether this is merely a sign-in sheet or, or a speaking sheet, so, but we do appreciate knowing who's here.
Good evening. I would like to first say to you all that rent control absolutely works, if your intent is to do nothing more than regulate rents. What is the side impacts? What are the impacts to these policies that you have put in place? It is horrific. There is no other way of putting it. It is horrific. I have been a rental property owner in the city of Tacoma Park for nearly 10 years. I have watched, within walking distance, all of my other rental property owners flip their houses at least three times. I've seen new people walk in, walk out, walk in, walk out, no sense of community, no improvement or improvement. on their properties, they have allowed them to dilapidate, they are absolutely horrific. And this is what you're looking at. Who are the winners? Who are the winners for all of this? I can only submit to you, the council, you can stand up and say, "Here I am, I'm trying to promote affordable housing, this is a great and wonderful thing. Who has to pay for it? All of the residential property owners? Massive amounts of additional tax burdens? Who has to pay for it? People who are barely struggling by with smaller units? Who has to pay for all of this? There is something fundamentally unfair." This gentleman made a very good comment. I would like to hear the answer from each and every one of you, those three simple questions, a matter of simple fairness. What I have witnessed in the time that I have owned these places, or I should say this place, is, okay, now I'm getting a yellow light. The, there is just so much wrong that I've seen, and I'm, okay, what's wrong, but this is just driving me nuts here. How much rental housing properties starts have occurred in Tacoma Park since rent control was implemented? If the point is providing affordable housing, how many homes or rental properties have been built? How many have gone condo? It's a disappearing commodity, and it's going to only continue, the more you continuously try to tweak a broken system. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Berkeley? Okay, Jane Holmes?
As you know, I'm Jane Holmes, and my husband and I are landlords. I pulled out my old speeches that I've made several times on rent stabilization, everything still is hanging there the same way as before. I mean, the landlords still have not been able to sit down. We get to comment in public hearings like this, but we don't, we haven't had a face-to-face or sit-down with city staff to discuss how these things impact us. We are the ones that are financing affordable housing, but our input is at public meetings only, and we don't see too much of that filter in to what is being put into this ordinance. You know, all our comments are just for not, nothing, nothing happens the way, you know, we aren't even considered to be, you know, any input that's, you know, useful to anything. Changing the annual rent stabilization allowance from 70% of the CPI to 100% will mean so little, just, it really isn't going to make up for all the years of everything that we've put into these things. It's not going to make up for that. Eliminating the capital improvement petition, you seem to think that only some of us have learned how to do it, but we have learned because we were trained, you spent money to train the landlords how to do it, and it was a way to improve the apartment, and it only affected that individual apartment that was going to enjoy the actual improvement, but now it's going to be spread across everything else on what is called the fair rate of return, which we still, still don't really know what that's going to be, although it does sound like it's going to be pretty convoluted and labor-intensive, and it's going to be very similar to the hardship petition that exists now, and nobody uses that. That's only been put in by maybe, I think, two or three people over the last decade, and nobody did the hardship petition, so now we'll have a fair rate of return petition that nobody will fill out, and it's just really, you know, I'm just bummed by the whole thing. I mean, it's been dragging on for years and years and years, and I think you said it was 18 months? I know it's been longer than that. They, yes, this round, we've been at this for years, you didn't want to talk about it for years, now you're talking about it, but you don't include us when it comes into what's going to happen.
Thank you. It looks like someone Riley? I can't make out the first name, R-I, or L-R, something L-I-Y? Does that make any sense? Okay. And then Teresa Delasanta?
I'm Teresa Delasanta. We own two five-unit apartment buildings at 8204 and 8206 Houston Court. I know that I've spoken to you before, but I'm coming back again to say one more time that you really need to take a closer look at ending rent control before you totally drive the housing stock of Tacoma Park into alternative forms, because this measure, as I read it, is not going to solve the problems that you're trying to address. It's very limited, and it's, as the other lady said, it's very convolutive, and it's also unfair. The landlords that continue to exist have been just hanging on there. We've been hanging on for the last 10 years at decreasing rates of return, to the point where, I know I've told you before, but our apartment buildings lost money for the last two years. It's not even a fair rate of return, there is no rate of return, there's a loss, and that's what you've driven landlords up against, and it's gotten, you know, we've had our apartment buildings on the market for six months, no one wants to buy them. No one does. They know what Tacoma Park rent control is like, and until rent control gets solved in a practical way, I mean, this is a very small step, and it's not practical, and I think you need to go back before you think about this ordinance, there needs to be a lot more work sessions to come up with a better solution than this. This is not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't forgotten about you, Mr. Delabadia, but I want to see if there's anyone else who would like to speak before we start on the second round. Yes, would you come up to the podium and identify yourself?
Good evening. My name is Bridget Bowers, I live on Westmoreland Avenue. I am an enthusiastic resident of the vibrant and artistic Tacoma Park community. While I applaud and support Tacoma Parks and specifically your efforts to build a community based on social justice tenants, I believe the methodology to be seriously flawed. I'm here tonight because I feel it would be a drastic and monumental mistake to eliminate the capital improvement petition. If the rent increase petition is eliminated, Tacoma Park is essentially and solely blaming landlords for the pervasive injustices of society and persecuting them for the livelihood they have chosen. Eliminating the capital improvement petition will only serve to leave landlords with no choice but to operate inadequate, antiquated, and dilapidated buildings. Apartment buildings and rental properties are a large and inevitable part of the economy here in Tacoma Park. Eliminating the only feasible way to make improvements and passing along cost as necessary only serves to hurt the community as a whole, not to mention those living within the building's walls. Rent control itself already ensures that rent prices are not commensurate with the rising cost of doing business. The rent increase petition at least allows hard-working landlords the flexibility of maintaining their properties for their tenants. The hardship petition proposed as an alternative to the rent increase petition is very similar to the one already on the books, which has only been utilized two times due to its convoluted and invasive nature. Additionally, it makes cost aggregate across apartments and tenants, which is quite simply unfair to those who do not benefit from the work. The percent of CPI from 70 to 100%, in short, does not provide enough income to ensure proper maintenance and improvements, as already mentioned, rents are not commensurate with cost of doing business per rent control. Pepco alone increased commercial costs about 54% for commercial users in the last year. Tacoma Park was recently voted one of the most desirable places to live in Washingtonian Magazine. How desirable will it be if landlords are unable to afford the upkeep of the historic and culturally relevant properties signature to Tacoma Park? Further, the rent control program in Tacoma Park simply does not further social justice, as tenants do not even need to qualify. Essentially, someone making $80,000 to $100,000 a year has access to the same benefits as someone making minimum wage. Instead of promoting apartment living, perhaps Tacoma Park should lower property taxes so that housing is more affordable to those who want to invest in a long-term future. I live within 50 feet of an apartment building and refuse to raise children next to a building that is destined to become dilapidated if rent increase petition is eliminated. In closing, I'd like to ask the council to reconsider the elimination of the rent increase petition. As a community, I believe we can come together to realize our vision of social justice in Tacoma Park in a more effective, strategic, inclusive, and targeted way. Let's maintain the unique and charming qualities of Tacoma Park that make it an artistic, diverse, and viable community, and not shoot ourselves in the foot by strangling an integral part of our economy. Landlords deserve equal rights too, they cannot shoulder the burden of all society's social injustices. I'd like to close by saying that landlords are a key stakeholder that I think need to be involved in this decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, why don't you come up to the podium? If additional people would like to speak, why don't you just line up behind the current speaker at the podium? And if you would please remember to identify yourself when you get up to the podium.
My name is Astor DeBaba. My husband and I, we own a three-unit building on Kennebec, 706 Kennebec. We bought the property only two years ago, not knowing the strict unbelievable rents that we can charge. We paid for appraisal of the property to see, that is the law of the land, we have property elsewhere too, and basically, we went ahead, paid for appraisal to see how much these units would grant, and that's how we qualified for the loan, not knowing there was this law within the city that would make us charge only $530 for a one-bedroom apartment. There is no way we could survive on that. So we had to borrow money from the house we own to subsidize people's rent, when these people were making more than we were. I think we made a huge mistake. And now, just last April, I believe, the law came out, if you want to sell your property, you have to make sure that the rent control is part of the deed of the real estate. Well, why weren't we told that? I mean, I have a qualified Realtor, Llewellyn Realtors in Rockville, she didn't know that. We paid for the appraisal, so, right now, we're really hurting, and I know a few of the gentlemen stated landlords, it looks like are, I guess, you know, by, not by choice, but we're forced to buckle under this rent control stabilization of the city, which is very difficult. I mean, you know, I'm new to Tacoma, only two years, but right now, we have to find a way to get out. Utility costs almost doubled for what we, what we taught, and we didn't even know we had to pay the utility. So, we have to be put, we have to call Pepco, the water company, to be put on a budget to pay for that. Thank God, they were willing to have a budget for us, so we pay about $300 a month for gas for those three units every single month, summer, winter, and same thing with the water, we were put on a budget, that's how we were able to manage so far. But right now, I would have to work, you know, if you want to take it and subsidize, this is good. I mean, rent control is good for those people who need it, but it's a surprise for us. And right now, I'm thinking, okay, so I'm only, you know, a small apartment owner, three to four, we're just individuals, we have a home in Silver Spring, we thought this is close to Silver Spring, we can manage it. I'm sorry, I don't want to run out of time, but I'm saying, the small, the big ones who have 30, 40, 50, 100, you know, they might have a way.
Can you wind up?
Sure.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, but I believe, the way I read it, what it's written up, is no different to me than what I've seen before, and I hope you address it, or there's got to be problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, my name is Michael Morelli. I was here, I guess, in the fall on one of your meetings and voiced my opposition to rent control, and I stated at that time that, being, having lived in New York for about 18 years of my life, during which rent control was in effect, the rent-controlled stock in the city was actually a laughingstock, because there were rich people living in controlled apartments for little and no rent, and the poor, and more and more apartments that were really in need of repairs couldn't be repaired because the landlords didn't have any money to make the capital improvements. Three years ago, I decided to buy a small apartment building on 240 Manor Circle, because I loved the architecture and I liked the fact that there was nice landscaping around it, and it also had an extra lot that allowed for parking. I knew going in that I wasn't going to make any money in that apartment, but I thought, you know, maybe I could do something with the extra lot and, you know, build some more. Much to my dismay, I found out that it would be just impossible to make any money even if I spent the money to put in an apartment. And in the meantime, I've been, the time I've been spending money to just keep the place going. Last year, I filed a capital improvement petition that gave me a little bit of relief. About three months after the petition was approved, I found out that one of the beams supporting the porch was rotten from, you know, rain having leaked into that wood for years, unbeknownst to me when I bought it, nor, you know, since then, I had to spend another $3,000 just to replace the beams to hold up the porch, and now I've got to make another petition, I guess, which at some point, I'll get some money back. The apartment has lost money ever since I bought it, and I, I will, you know, I will do all I can to keep the place going, because I'm that kind of a person, I want to, I want to provide a nice place for my tenants, and I've been doing this for the last 30 years, and, you know, you, all my tenants, they will testify to that, that I, you know, I'm probably the best landlord, you know, not to blow my own horn, but I'm probably the best landlord around here. So I agree with every comment that these gentlemen have made, and ladies, about the ineffectiveness of rent control, and I really, really urge you to take a good look at it, and with the intent of possibly eliminating it at some point. One more point, and I will quit. I have to pay all of the utilities. It's known all over that electricity and gas have increased by 50, 60% over the past three or four years, so what kind of a study do you need to find out that, you know, you need to get some relief for that expense?
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Thank you very much. I have heard a lot of...
Can you identify yourself again for the record?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my name is Billy Sambut. I have lived in Tacoma Park the last 28 years. The first time I moved was in Park Ridge in 1980. Park Ridge used to be a wonderful place. I remember in 1980, I paid for $284, including utility, dishwasher, and everything. And the way it has gone on without this rent control, really, most of us who has been marginalized from this economic area would have been thrown on the street. I have heard from Park Ridge management... area would have been thrown on the street. I have heard from Park Ridge management, at the beginning, we had to put escrow account in order to survive, to get hot water. They were trying to become a landlord, drive us out, and throw us on the street. I know, I understand, there are some very nice landlords who work with the tenants. One thing we should know, there wouldn't be any lords without the tenants. We have to understand that. We need a fair return on the capital. Today, I have seen right here making a mockery on fair return petition. It was explained very well. Income minus expense, net operating profit times, the city is willing to give them fifty to a hundred percent CPI, Consumer Price Index. Who else? When I work, most of the people don't even get the Consumer Price Index on their salary. Let us be fair. I know most people in this city, they earn less than ten dollars an hour, which amounts to four hundred dollars a week. By national standard, nobody will get four hundred dollars rent in the city. We all work, spend half of our monthly income on rents. There is a problem, not only here, but nationwide. If you want to know, this country is for everyone, is a human right, basic shelter and healthcare. Eleanor Roosevelt wrote it, signed it, but we didn't work for it. Okay? That's why, I mean, I don't know how much return they want. ExxonMobil made five billion dollars in profit. They say we never had it enough. And the government is subsidizing for their exploration. Let us be fair. We need each other. You need a good return on the property. There is hardship petition, everything. And we are not making that much money. This is a fair thing that we have to work out. I have seen...
Can you wind up?
Okay. Thank you very much. It makes me so emotional. There is some disparity. We have to work it out together.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
There are too many chiefs, very few Indians here. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
My name is June Remy. I own a three-unit apartment on Flower Avenue. I'm just here, I identify with the lady landlord. We recently bought, it's now two years, and to be quite honest, this has been one of the worst investments we've ever made. I also, when we put together, in fact, my husband and I don't keep our regular jobs. We pay our mortgage through our regular jobs for that apartment on Flower Avenue. We have lost money on it. We upkeep it. And every time we get information from Tacoma Park, there is so much paperwork. It is so confusing. You call, and you call, and you cannot get people sometimes to answer. And when they do answer, eventually, you just come in. It's easy just to come in, do your paperwork, and have them explain it to you. You have to go through too much paperwork just to get most simple things done. I identify with what a lot of the landlords are saying. In fact, one of my rent, I have a one-unit, and I'm now barely covering four something, four hundred and, was it thirty or forty dollars for this one bedroom? And it has, it's a one-bedroom. It has everything inside because of the way the rents are. All I can say is that I'm so disappointed. I also am not a landlord who just came and started. I was also a tenant. I was a tenant here. And there was one time I came here and a council member said, "I'm sure a lot of you landlords never worked for less, for more than thirty, less than thirty thousand dollars a year." Well, I really went home and I had a good laugh and cry because I have worked for less than thirty thousand dollars. I've had three kids. I've raised them. And I've been able to buy property on eighteen thousand dollars a year without my husband working. So I identify with what, as a tenant and as a landlord. And also, having roaches in a premises, I've been through that. And we've all, and having to apologize for having roaches. Yes, we have to get rid of things either because the tenant once stood up here, and she even apologized for talking about roaches in an apartment. I recently got a note because of my property where the person next door is telling me to get rid of an owl and saying I was the one to blame for an owl. And yes, I was being blamed for an owl, and I had to get rid of it. So if you all want to come and shoot the owl, shoot it.
Not within the city limits.
I would like to, though. But, I mean, I am so frustrated now. Our property taxes, I don't think a lot of tenants realize how much our property taxes are. It's over six thousand dollars a year, and I just have one unit. I don't think they really know. But I do identify with a lot of the landlords, and what they're saying is true.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Delabadia, would you like to complete your statement?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me continue. I...
I'll give you another three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Most people living in Tacoma Park, landlords especially, have a great desire to improve their property for the pride of it. And this is very true of owner-occupied landlords, but not necessarily too important to an investor who is trying to make a profit on his building. And you have to borrow money in order to improve it. And who's going to lend you any money when you can only pay it back at the rate that COLTA will let you get your return on? Not many people would consider that a good deal. I'm not really sure of the following, but it seems to me that the taxes that I pay and most other landlords seem to be higher than single-family home taxes. But we don't have any way to compensate for that in our rent, by rent increases. And it seems that the rest of the county might be a little different because they can increase their rents if their taxes go up. So we're sort of discriminated against here by the taxation in Tacoma Park. I'm not a hundred percent sure. That just seems that way to me. A lot of us owner-occupied landlords are getting older, and they're looking for their rents to help supplement their income in retirement. I realize the reason for rent controls provide affordable housing for some people, but it shouldn't be on the backs of the owner-occupied landlords as long as they only own one building. Tacoma Park Housing and Community Development suggested that we landlords attend a seminar on May twelfth, two thousand and five, titled Apartment Assistance Program Seminar. And it answered the question, how to reverse a negative cash flow, with a short answer, either cut expenses or raise rents. Well, that's the Tacoma Park interpretation, I guess, between the rock and the hard place. You can't do either. We're already cutting it to the bone, and you can't really increase the rents. Presently, our rent increases are governed by multiplying the Maryland DC and Virginia CPI average by seven point seven, and it usually falls between one and two percent. Does anybody really think that their expenses have increased by only one or two percent in recent years? I don't think so. Will this reverse your negative cash flow? I really doubt it. The council is considering giving themselves a hundred percent salary increase, followed by a permanent ten percent per year. At the end of the first year, this would mount to a hundred and twenty percent increase of today's salary, while the landlords are hobbled by an increase around two percent. Under the current proposal, the income increases would be point three percent of CPI, this is the increase from point seven, for landlords, and a hundred and twenty percent for council members. Now, I am not against a salary increase for the council. I think you guys work real hard at what you do, and you're very dedicated people, and without you, we'd be living in chaos. You earned every bit of what you get now and deserve this entire increase. I'm not opposed to that. But we should be getting something to take care of our places as well. So I ask you, please reconsider the options for exempting these owner-occupied buildings from rent control. And I'd like to say something to the people here, that everybody here has presented a lot of information. I'm sure that the council members can't absorb it all, and it would be wise for everyone to email all of them with your ideas.
Sure, sure. You're welcome to do that. Yes, thank you. You want to also say something else?
Yes, I'll be brief.
Can you just, Mayor Porter, can you give the email where comments can be sent?
I think the city clerk, do you want to give the comments emailed? The city clerk, if you send one copy, the city clerk, she'll distribute it to the rest of the council.
Sure. You can send comments to clerk@tacomagov.org.
It's clerk@tacomagov.org. It's an odd address, but go ahead.
Continuing my comments on a more procedural ground, I don't know if any of you are aware how incredibly frustrating it is, you've heard it from some of the people here, to talk to the council for three minutes on any given Monday evening, not get any direct feedback, and see the process just go on. The only way to make a tight draft of a statute or even come up with a good policy is to sit down with the people that are interested and kick things around, look at every provision in a draft, and see, is this really going to work the way we think it's going to work? What are the implications of it? You have to have two sides, at a minimum, maybe three, four, or five sides, to really come up with a good product. It's interesting to me to note tonight how many tenants have come out to speak on behalf of preserving rent control as it is. Not many. I don't know why. But that's an element of the community that ought to be brought directly into this process, the same time that you should be sitting down with landlords to say, does this work this way? You ought to be talking to tenants. You ought to ask tenants how much they make, how much of a burden is it? We had one council session on that, but nothing was really followed through. Bottom line, affordable housing is a laudable goal. Help the people who need it. Don't waste the resources of landlords on people who don't need it. And in addition, spend money to get experts who know something about affordable housing to tell you how to make it sustainable. The city of Tacoma Park has a whole bunch of affordable units because in nineteen eighty or eighty-one, the prime rate was over twenty percent, and the city wanted to stabilize rents, not control them, just stabilize them. You ended up with all these below-market units, and frankly, you just can't include enough money in the city budget to subsidize that many rents. So you just say, we'll just make the landlords pay for it. It goes back to the question I asked before. Do you really think that's fair? Or are you just stealing money from landlords or to rob from what you think are the rich to give to the poor? I'm serious about asking during the work session for each of the council members to answer the three questions I posed. And if you can't remember them, I'll be glad to repeat them. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make another comment?
Thank you. I would like to make another comment and to address to the city council as well as to some of the landlords here, specifically this gentleman here. When he asked, he would like to know what some of the tenants make. I will tell you tonight what I make. I make thirty thousand dollars a year. I get paid twice a month, and I bring home about seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. My rent is eleven hundred dollars a month. If you add seven fifty and seven fifty, that's fifteen hundred dollars. Subtract eleven hundred dollars and see what I have left, four hundred dollars. I need the Rent Stabilization Act as well as a lot of the other tenants in this community because I know for a fact I make a considerable amount more than some of my neighbors. So I would say thank you to everyone who has spoken tonight. Thank you to the city council. I don't think the landlord should have to shoulder all of the burden, but we, tenants, need to be taken into consideration as well. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we're getting into the applause part of the discussion, so maybe we can ask people to make their comments brief if they can, and we'll go to the work session as soon as we're finished with this part. Go ahead.
Again, I'll say my name is Tobin Henson, and I absolutely agree with you. You need some form of affordable housing. Is rent control the answer? There's perhaps a better way. This is what we should be looking for. Rent control is illegal in thirty-six out of fifty states, if I'm not mistaken, at the state level. Why is it made illegal that much? It doesn't work. It's proven. The other thing is, I'd just like to say to all of you, you're a business, you're a company, you're in the business of managing our city, and so you are very familiar with running a corporation, running a company. Imagine if you would, the additional burden and bureaucracy thrown on as a small business owner, that all of this rent control stuff is throwing on to you. It is incredibly cumbersome. Also, you have this lovely, we have this lovely community center. The very first thing that you did when you decided to get this community center going is to secure funding to do so. It is the only way in which you can run a business or do any form of improvements or anything else. What you're asking landlords to do is to put your money out, and then, maybe, at a whim, however you feel like it, maybe we can come like Oliver and say, please, can we have some more? And quite frankly, that's the situation that we're in. You would not invest penny one without a reasonable expectation on your return. Then you ask yourself, why are you looking at eyesores for housing? Why are you looking at dilapidated things? Not only is there no money to do so, you're not giving any form of incentive to do so. You are destroying a community with this. I hope you realize that. Please, please, think about what this is doing. Look at the consequences. Again, don't want to take all of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I can't help, as I'm looking at all the council members with very earnest faces, listening with attention to what we're saying here. I just, I haven't been following the process carefully, but I am assuming that studies have been paid for and have been conducted about the benefits of the rent stabilization and looking into these new formulas and such. I would like to ask if, in fact, has as much energy or effort put into projecting what the future might be like, if, in fact, it was eliminated? Has that question been asked? I guess you can't answer now.
Well, I mean, we're assuming that the same thing would happen as is happening elsewhere in the county, is that rents rise to a level that most lower-income, working people can't afford them.
I understand. Is that the only, is that the only outcome, that people can't afford them? Because as some people have pointed out to you, you know, what you're doing is the other outcome, is you're placing, as other people have phrased it, the burden on the landlords. I mean, I'll bet you all run your households like businesses. I mean, if you have good households, you run them like businesses, you know, you do the in and you do the out, and you figure out what you can afford on groceries, and what you can afford on utilities, and what you can afford on discretionary money. And you work within the system as the system tells you how it works. Now, what if some entity tells you that the widgets that you've been manufacturing can only be sold for X number of dollars? Why? Because there's some formula. Is that how, you know, do you run your house on a formula? I don't, I'm just wondering if you ask the question. You are a bunch of individuals out there dealing with your own personal budgets. For me, as a landlord, that is my budget. And I have to ask, why is someone telling me what I can and cannot do when it doesn't really hurt anybody else? Because when somebody comes in, and when a new tenant comes in, I'm not hurting them by charging them the market rate. We're having an agreement, just like you have an agreement when you go to the grocery store and you buy a gallon of milk. Does anybody tell the milk people how much they can charge?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
Do they?
Yes.
Milk is a federally regulated commodity.
Oh, one item. Okay. Well, what about compots? I just, I, you know, I, it's, but the original point of my question is...
Actually, with the milk base, they tell you how much you have to charge, not how little.
I wonder, I wonder if the council has projected into the future what actually would happen, the whole picture, if it were eliminated, if there was actually that question asked.
If you eliminated rent control in a state that has no just-caused eviction, and keep in mind that I am not a supporter of rent control...
I'm sorry, what was that term, just?
Just-caused eviction. You can evict anybody for any reason at any time. If you eliminated, just completely eliminated...
You're saying we can do that in a state?
Yes.
Oh, and it only takes four months?
Let me finish your question. If you completely eliminated it and did not... If you completely eliminated it and did not, in fact, shift to some other kind of a mechanism, then half of the households in this town would turn over easily in a year.
To what?
They would turn over to market rates. People would be evicted, and all those, those units would go up to market rates. That just complete elimination of rent control is, is not a feasible.
Well, then what about this gentleman's suggestion of only allowances and making change?
Can we change, can we hold this discussion until we get to the work session part of this?
Another result is that Emma would not be able to live in Tacoma Park or probably in Montgomery County.
All right. I think, I, I think I'm going to draw the line at two rounds for each person. I think that that is probably going to have to be it. We have a, the council is going to take a very short recess. If you'd like to talk to individual members of the council, well, I'll, I'll speak for myself. I will be around if you'd like to talk to me, but I think that we need to go on to the work session, which we will do immediately after the council recess. expert that we've hired on rent stabilization, and Ken Sigmund is our city attorney who specializes in housing issues. We also have, just walking into the room again, Sarah Daines, who's director of the Department of Housing. And so what we're going to do at this point is to talk about the draft and what we heard today. I should point out that there is going to be some additional things happening in the next couple of weeks. I hope that at the conclusion of this work session this evening, we will have a working, some working decisions that we can use to develop a draft that can be considered at first reading next week. When the draft is considered before the council, there will be an opportunity for public hearings. If it gets through the council on first reading, it will appear before the council the following week for second reading. There will also be an opportunity for public comments at second reading. So there will be at least two additional opportunities for public comments on the ordinance itself before it is finally dealt with by the council. And as Sarah pointed out, there's also an opportunity for public comments on the regulations that will be promulgated under the ordinance if it passes. So what we are dealing with is the ordinance, the draft ordinance that was presented to the council and that is available on the side. I wonder, Dr. Barr, if you could start by just doing a very quick overview of the fair return rent increases, since I think that we were leaving that to this part of the meeting.
Okay. And if I'm not speaking loud enough, please tell me.
Okay, I think your, your microphone seems to be turned up sufficiently at this point.
Okay. The type of standard, which in many ways is a continuation of your current standard, you have a hardship standard, and you changed the name to a fair return standard, but the basic underlying concept is that the, an owner had a certain base net operating income is a fair return, and one has a right to having that net operating income increased by a percentage of the CPI. And under different ordinances, it's different percentages. In your draft, an owner has a right to their net operating income increasing by half the rate of increase in the CPI, which means they have a right to a rent increase that covers their operating cost increases and permits the growth in net operating income, which is the measure of the profit, on top of that. That's the underlying concept. And people say, well, how is fair return defined? That's what it is. It's prior net operating income adjusted by the consumer price index. And this is a commonly used fair return standard under rent regulations.
I, I'd like to just, I think in the materials that you provided us, particularly in the memorandum which follows the draft law, you talked a lot about indexing the, the fair returns from the base year up to the current year. And I, I appreciated that discussion. Most of the discussion was based on a comparison between increases in, in the returns versus increases in the, the equity value in the property. Another way to look at it might be to compare the returns to the increases in the operating costs, wouldn't it? Which might not increase with the equity value.
Okay, when you say compare, under this type of standard, the, the starting point is there, is the rent increases have to cover the increase in operating cost?
Right.
And when you, when you say compare, you mean with the rate of increase in operating cost, or?
The, the examples that you've given us are, are comparisons between the equity value, the increase in equity value in the property over time to the, looking at the CPI increase in the property value versus what happens in the, what happens to 100% CPI versus how the percentage of the CPI that you're using compares to the percentage increase in the equity value.
Right.
If I said that correctly. And your, and, and the illustrations that you're using show that 50% covers that increase.
Okay, what I, what I-
Dr. Barr, who is over there, Dr. Kenneth Barr, and Ken Sigmund. Dr. Barr is our expert that we've hired on rent stabilization, and Ken Sigmund is our city attorney who specializes in housing issues. We also have, just walking into the room again, Sarah Daines, who's director of the Department of Housing. And so what we're going to do at this point is to talk about the draft and what we heard today. I should point out that there is going to be some additional things happening in the next couple of weeks. I hope that at the conclusion of this work session this evening, we will have some working decisions that we can use to develop a draft that can be considered at first reading next week. When the draft is considered before the council, there will be an opportunity for public hearings. If it gets through the council on first reading, it will appear before the council the following week for second reading. There will also be an opportunity for public comments at second reading. So there will be at least two additional opportunities for public comments on the ordinance itself before it is finally dealt with by the council. And as Sarah pointed out, there's also an opportunity for public comments on the regulations that will be promulgated under the ordinance if it passes. So what we are dealing with is the ordinance, the draft ordinance that was presented to the council and that is available on the side. I wonder, Dr. Barr, if you could start by just doing a very quick overview of the fair return rent increases, since I think that we were leaving that to this part of the meeting.
Okay. And if I'm not speaking loud enough, please tell me.
Okay, I think your microphone seems to be turned up sufficiently at this point.
The type of standard, which in many ways is a continuation of your current standard, you have a hardship standard, and changed the name to a fair return standard, but the basic underlying concept is that an owner had a certain base net operating income is a fair return, and one has a right to having that net operating income increased by a percentage of the CPI. And under different ordinances, it's different percentages. In your draft, an owner has a right to their net operating income increasing by half the rate of increase in the CPI, which means they have a right to a rent increase that covers their operating cost increases and permits the growth in net operating income, which is the measure of the profit on top of that. That's the underlying concept. And people say, well, how is fair return defined? That's what it is. It's prior net operating income adjusted by the Consumer Price Index. And this is a commonly used fair return standard under rent regulations.
I'd like to just, I think in the materials that you provided us, particularly in the memorandum which follows the draft law, you talked a lot about indexing the fair returns from the base year up to the current year. And I appreciated that discussion. Most of the discussion was based on a comparison between increases in the returns versus increases in the equity value in the property. Another way to look at it might be to compare the returns to the increases in the operating costs, wouldn't it? Which might not increase with the equity value.
Okay, when you say compare, under this type of standard, the starting point is the rent increases have to cover the increase in operating cost?
Right.
And when you say compare, you mean with the rate of increase in operating cost?
The examples that you've given us are comparisons between the equity value, the increase in equity value in the property over time to the, looking at the CPI increase in the property value versus what happens to 100% CPI versus how the percentage of the CPI that you're using compares to the percentage increase in the equity value.
Right.
If I said that correctly. And the illustrations that you're using show that 50% covers that increase.
Okay, what I point out is, I mean, due to leveraging, which is, you know, standard, certainly not universal in real estate investments, and of course, it varies from property to property, basically because of the leveraging factor, when your value grows at a certain rate, but your equity, which is a portion of the value, grows at a quicker rate. And the simplest example I can use is, let's say, to use a house analogy, if you buy a house for $100,000, I'm just, you know, obviously can't, but, and you borrowed $70,000, and you put $30,000 down, if the house goes up in value, let's say to $130,000, your house value has only gone up 30%, but in this case, your equity has gone from $30,000 to $60,000 because your mortgage principal, assuming your mortgage principal is still the same. And one of the advantages of real estate investments, as opposed to stock investments or putting money in the bank, is you can leverage your investment. And this standard, you know, so there are arguments for indexing the net operating income at less than the full CPI increase because you do have the advantage of leveraging.
Right. And I guess I wanted to sort of look at it a different way, using your example, you would realize that increased value in your property, if you either sold the property or took out a loan or something based on the increase in your equity value. You have to do something like that to get that increase in value in cash.
Right, right. But you're also getting, you know, you're getting increasing net operating income on your original investment.
If you are defining that as part of the value of your property, yes. I guess, let me just throw out what I was thinking of as a way of looking at it. I think you made the point, and I think you made it very well, that we should compare the standard that we use to the kinds of costs that were allowed under the previous indexing standard. And so it seems to me that if you're going to do that, that a 70% increase might make sense. We based the 70% of CPI increase on data that we had at the time that, and I don't remember whether it was in the state of Maryland or nationally, that on average rental property owners, that 30% of their costs were financing costs. And so presumably, those don't increase by the CPI over time, they can actually even go down. And the other 70% were non-financing costs. So would it make sense, I guess, to say, if you use that same standard, instead of increasing by either 50 or 100, you increase by 70%, what you're doing is you're increasing by the same proportion of the CPI as non-financing costs are of total costs. And I guess the question that I would have is, does that make some sense?
Okay. Increasing the overall rent at 70% of the CPI
Right.
is a lot different than increasing the net operating income at 70% of the CPI.
Or setting the standard as the increase of, right.
But certainly, I mean, whether you decide to increase the net operating income at 50% of the CPI, or 70% of the CPI, or 100% of the CPI, that's a policy choice.
Right.
And I'd say, you know, it'd be perfectly valid to say, okay, you want the net operating income to be increased to 70% of CPI over the base year. What's happened is a reality, I mean, I haven't, we haven't seen the utility data, but I imagine, in a reality, where you limited annual increases to 70% of the CPI for a good number of years, that during that period, the net operating income grew at far less than that, less than 70% of the CPI. There's a good chance it grew at less than 50% of the CPI during that period for the average owner, except some owners got capital improvement increases. And so I don't think you can equate the two that way.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, and
I mean, it's complicated.
Yeah, I understand that it's complicated, but it seems to me that there's sort of quick reasonableness to that, that is sort of appealing. But I understand what you're saying. Are there other questions?
Could you elaborate a little more on the fair return petition idea? Because as I understood it, it seems like going forward from now, it would mean that a landlord who was losing money every year would have perfect grounds for one of these petitions, assuming they had, you know, records to do that.
Right. Well, any owner, if their net operating income hasn't increased from the base period, they would have that right. Now, you do have the problem of records, and now you have, basically have an alternate and imputed net operating income for the base year, which is defined as fair. And if somebody's net operating income hasn't gone above that level, and then I put in an alternative, suggest an alternative, the year 2000, there are advantages and disadvantages to the year 2000 as an alternative. The advantage is it covers a longer time period, so we can look if somebody's net operating income hasn't grown by a certain amount over 2000, they can get the benefit of that. On the other hand, they're less likely to have records back to 2000. And I mean, you could say 2003 is the alternative base year. I mean, every owner should still have those records, but then you're covering a shorter period, and, you know, what happened to their net operating income in 2000, 2003? Or, I mean, I didn't suggest this, you could have an alternative, you could have a third possible base year, 2003, or a fourth one.
What would, what were your thoughts on owners who bought recently, who wouldn't, what base year would they end up using?
Well, one, okay, I think that's a good issue. You could have something that, where somebody bought it, they could use the year before they purchased it. They should have gotten income and expense records when they purchased the property as a diligent purchaser. They, you know, and obviously, they still have the 1990 alternative. Or you could make it, the problem, or you could say the first year after they purchased it as an alternative.
So we use, can I just rephrase that to make sure I understand? So you're suggesting something you could do would be to say that if the property was purchased since 2000, they could use either the year before or the year after they purchased as a base year also?
Right, right. I mean, you know, the other flip side of that, I mean, when somebody bought the property, they should have been taking into account what income it had at that point. And those people could end up with, you know, better off than people who didn't purchase the property recently. It's having their trade-offs. There's no perfect solution in this situation.
I had another relatively minor question. I noticed on your list of operating expenses, on page eight of the current draft, it's item eight on
Contributions to lobbying efforts?
No, 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 the, there's a long list, a long list of operating expenses.
Okay, yes.
Okay? You did not specifically mention repairs and supplies? Was there some?
Okay, well, that was, I guess I thought of those, but I thought of those as being included as reasonable operating and maintenance expenses, but those could be explicitly listed.
I just was trying to make sure there wasn't a reason you had not included it.
No, well, I, no, okay. I mean, you said all reasonable operating and maintenance expenses, including but not limited to, but I follow your point.
You also have amortized cost of capital improvements in there, too.
That's correct.
Yes.
And that would cover possibly some of those. It seems like a fairly inclusive list.
Well, the difference between a repair and a capital improvement is, you know, there's all kinds of tax things that define those.
Yes.
But it's better to always have these things explicit.
And another small one is, in the fair return section, it isn't entirely clear to me, although perhaps it can be inferred, is the intention that this would apply to a building or a single unit in a building?
No, the intention would be to a building.
Yes, what I, right.
Should it say that then?
Yes. I think I would prefer that it did. It would be enormously complicated to do it by unit.
Well, to look at the income and expenses, you need to look at them by the building anyway.
Right.
And you could have a situation where capital improvements only affected certain units, and now, and somebody reviewing a petition might say, well, you know, building, there's an X dollar rent increase for the building, and there's some units that got capital improvements, and for those units, it should be a little different. But, you know, clearly, this is intended to apply to the building, but that should be stated.
Are there other questions?
Sarah, as I requested during your presentation, are there ways that we could revise the proposed language to make sure that we're not expanding rent control with this recodification?
We chatted briefly about the options over the break and during the public hearing. And based on a conversation with Dr. Barr and staff, it's a little problematic. One of the original proposals that the council was asked to consider was to look at, identify a size of a property that you would want to exempt, two, three, four unit building, for example. And if you, one option would be to identify the size of the rental facility in its entirety and exempt that with the condition that one of the units be owner occupied. And I would not address the condominium question. And from our perspective, based on the market for condominium units and the conversion of several of the properties in Tacoma Park, where the units have been converted but the sales have been slow, you can't really exempt condominium units either. Because there's some property owners that, you know, they're still holding five or six units, condominium units, as they're waiting for the market to gear up again, or as they're continuing to market that particular property. We really would discourage you from looking at what you currently have, which is, again, based on the number of units that you own, again, because of the ease with which that can be circumvented in terms of the ownership setup. So we'd like you to continue to look at the structure. And if you're specifically concerned about the smaller units where one of the, the smaller facilities where one of the units are occupied by the owner, then perhaps you want to go back and reconsider identifying the certain size of a property and then adding the condition that it be owner occupied. Keeping in mind that we have some properties that have three units, one is, one unit's owner occupied, we have four unit properties with the owner lives in one of the units, we have 21 unit properties where the owner lives in one of the units. So I think you can't just say any owner occupied rental housing facility, because that kind of creates some interesting challenges. I think you would have to be very specific in terms of the size. And there are other ordinances that have looked at owner occupants within a defined size of a rental facility.
Want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, exemptions for owner occupied smaller buildings are very common among rent controls, for example, two, three, or four unit buildings where one unit is owner occupied. And the only, or suggestions I make about if you do that, is one, that that should have to go be approved administratively reviewed. And secondly, to have some kind of minimum period for owner occupancy, so you don't have somebody, you know, moving in for a month to get their units out from the regulation.
Now, how is this, so you're proposing that if we did that owner occupied requirement, then it would be somehow easy?
Yes, but it would be, my thought would be, you'd have to, you know, file for
To me, like, it makes it more complicated. And I don't know if this was done when you were here, Dr. Barr, but the council took a vote on this, kind of just a straw vote, and three of us were not in favor, or what was it? It was a proposal to exempt four unit buildings and fewer. And three of us thought that was a good idea. Three of us thought, what was the?
Three to four, it was a three to four vote. Three council members in favor and four against.
And what was the other proposal?
The other proposal was to exempt only single unit properties.
So there's some split on the council in terms of this number of units issue, and I don't think we have quite the right solution yet. I certainly would vehemently oppose expanding rent control to buildings that are not currently under it. I think that's a terrible idea, which I thought we had ruled out in the beginning of our discussion, but I can see that it's now been ruled back in somehow. That doesn't simplify this process. That actually just aggravates more of our residents and our landlords and probably our So I definitely can't support that. I'm happy to revisit the issue of number of units to exempt in light of what you've shared with us today.
You are on the losing side of that, so unless you can swing somebody's vote.
Maybe, maybe you counted your four already. I don't know that, but I am saying that in light of this information, it does seem to me that this legislation is doing, is going beyond what we all assumed it was doing. So when we were on the losing end of that vote, we thought, well, okay, split decision in some ways, and let's see what difference it makes. Well, now we know that it's going to make a much bigger difference than just what we originally thought, so.
I think that the issue that's actually making the biggest change is the aspect of the law, which instead of considering the number of rental units as the basis for the exemption, looks at the number of units in the building as the basis for exemption. And we adopted that change in standards because of Dr. Barr's advice, that the number of units owned by an individual was subject to manipulation and sort of gaming the system.
But that is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the number of units in a building.
Right, and we made that change, and that is the change. What Dr. Barr is talking about now is essentially sticking with the council's previous decision, which you said in reaction, in response to Joy's question, is looking at the number of units in a building, but putting another layer on that, which is looking at buildings in which the owner occupies one of those units, which, you're right, it's an additional complication on the standard, but it would address part of the concern that you have, not the whole thing. I think the issue of condominiums is something that we're not going to be able to address because unless we decide to exempt, you know, 200 unit buildings, we're not going to be able to get all the condominiums. And, you know, anytime you make changes to the law, there are going to be some things that don't work the way you would ideally like them to, and I don't know how you get around that. You just do the best you can.
Oftentimes, though, unintended consequences in legislation are something that you're not aware of at the time that you propose and then pass the legislation. The unintended consequences are usually something that shows up later as a reaction to the legislation. So if you're saying that this legislation is perfect and doesn't need to be touched, I really don't agree. I think that now is the time to make sure this is the right legislation to propose and to vote on.
I'm not making that argument. What I'm saying is that if we went by the standard What I'm saying is that if we went by the standard that was suggested by one of the individuals in the hearing, which is to exempt buildings of a certain number of units or less, one of which was a unit occupied by the owner, that was the standard I thought that you were talking about, it sounds like it could be done if the council wished to do it. However, that is not going to take, that is not going to affect condominiums. And as a matter of fact, as long as we use the number of units in a building standard, most condominiums are probably going to be included under rent stabilization.
And I, I really didn't bring up condominiums. I'm not sure how that got in here, but what I did bring up was I think it is an enormous mistake for the city to pass legislation that expands rent control to properties that are not currently under rent control. I, I don't know if people know that that is something that is in what will be proposed and voted on next week, but to me, that seems like a crazy making, just, you know.
Just, just as a point of information, notification of the ordinance with language identifying this as a possibility was sent to all of the condominium owners who are the ones who'll be most probably impacted, as well as all of the licensed rental facilities in the community. So everybody who would be affected by this should have gotten notification of it, assuming that they're licensed or a condominium.
And there have been at least two times in the past, maybe others that I don't remember, where we have expanded rent stabilization to units that had not previously been under. So I mean, it's not something that has never happened. Yes.
Hi. I'm sorry I missed the beginning. I understand we're talking about the fair return petition and maybe anything else we want to talk about? Are we, are we starting component by component?
Yep, certainly we can talk about anything people want to talk about. Only I would very strongly suggest that we stick to this, to this draft and not sort of wander off into the wilds of rent stabilization theory.
Okay. So on page seven, the standards for rent increases pushing up to the fair rent petition. I think one of the things that I had the most hope for was that we would come up with a fair return process that would be easier to cope with and would actually be fair. But the idea of doing the net operating income adjusted by 50% of the percentage increase in the consumer price index from the base year until two seven, 2007, seems to me to actually be less than what we had during all that time because we had a 70% CPI on the rent. And I understand that these are different figures, but still, that, that doesn't make sense to me. That seems to me like it's going to be really difficult to address some of the situations that the landlords are having. On the flip side of that, I'm also worried that, you know, the, and I know we've limited it to, I think to 15% of, in any given year, there's, there's a limit on how much the rents could increase. I'm worried that in cases where the difference between how much income is on a building right now and what the fair return would be could have a really serious negative impact on the tenants who are living there. So I actually have concerns on both sides of that. And I know you already said that you feel like net operating income is really different, but I'll have to go back to economics class to figure out how different that is. To the issue of, that Joy was speaking about, about bringing new people under rent control, I also think that that is not a good idea. And I think that there has to be a way to deal with this issue of people who have made a housing situation work for them and for their tenants, since their tenant has moved in at that, at that rate, where someone's gone out and gotten a mortgage on a place based on living in two of the units or living in a unit, having their parents live in a unit and renting one of the units. And I think to, if somebody's been living in that situation for two years or, or five years and then we want to take them backwards on their rents.
Backwards, we take them backwards on their rents?
If they come under rent control.
They wouldn't be going backwards, they'd be establishing a new base rent.
From that time, okay. Well, that's good. The condo issue. Now, I guess I didn't follow this either because since these increases would only apply in a case where somebody voluntarily vacated their place, if we've got, you used the, the example of Mr. Wasser's building at 210 Lee.
116.
116 Lee, thanks. 116 Lee. If you had somebody who was living in the unit that had been converted to a condominium and they were renting it now, could their rent go up immediately under this? It wouldn't go up until it was vacated, right?
If you had an owner occupied condominium unit and they decided to vacate, it would be just like the scenario with your three flat. They would be required to establish a base rent for that particular unit and then subsequent rents would be regulated by the ordinance as well as any of the other conditions regarding the, the unit. If you have, and it gets, it gets a little problematic because, say, for example, Mr. Wasser has made a significant number of improvements to the, to the property that are a result of going through the condominium conversion process. You would have to establish a base rent for those units that have not yet sold, that are continued to be rented out until such time as the tenant either acquires the property or acquires the unit, vacates the unit and the property is sold, or the unit is sold. So it would.
They have a base rent now, though, because they're still covered under whatever it was.
But that's, that's assuming that the unit is.
Unchanged because it's a rental unit.
Has not changed, yeah.
Unchanged in what way?
Right, and.
But many of those.
I have to think, I, let me.
There's, there is a discussion of what that means in the law, in the part where it talks about new units.
Mm-hmm.
And it talks about the kinds of things that make a unit, a new unit. I'm not finding it real quick.
Yeah, it's in the, on the first or second page.
Yeah.
Properties that would be exempt upon the grant of an application.
Okay, newly constructed rental units, it's on page three, number two at the top. I'm sorry, number three at the top.
Would, so he owns this building and 51% of it is still, he keeps his rental and the other 49% he sold as condominiums, correct?
As an example, the numbers are different, but yes.
Okay, as an example. All the ones that remain rentals?
Are still.
Are still.
And I'm thinking, the, yeah.
Okay.
The units that are still, the units that are rented in a building that has been converted to condominiums and have not yet sold are still subject to rent stabilization right now, presuming that there's more than one of them in the building and the landlord doesn't own any other rental property in Tacoma Park. If, for example, however, they were to convert a building to condominiums.
Uh-huh.
Do the renovation work, the existing tenant elected not to acquire the unit and opted to move out instead, and that unit became vacant, and for whatever reason it did not sell, and the owner, for cash flow reasons or whatever, decided to re-rent that unit, it would then be subject to rent stabilization again and you would establish a new base rent.
Why?
Well, if you, if you set it up this way, you'd have to, to be equitable across the board for your earlier scenario where you're establishing a base rent for a unit that currently isn't under rent stabilization. If you don't want, you know, if you don't want property owner A, who is renting out one unit in their three unit, to have to go back to 1995 to establish the base rent.
Right.
A similar sort of fairness test, if you will, would need to be considered in terms of condominium units that did not sell over a period of time. And again, I'm thinking out loud and I have Chad who has dealt.
I would disagree, assuming they owned it for that whole.
And Dr. Barr does not agree with me at all.
So it seems like this is something that would have to be worked out.
Yeah, but it's, it's things like that that have got to be finessed and would be dealt with during the, the regulation process. But the basic question about whether or not a property, the requirements of rent stabilization apply to a property or not, from our perspective, should still be based on the size of the facility and not who owns how many units throughout the community.
And in, in general, I think that's a sound principle. Let me throw one more thing out to consider. Our scenario of our foreign service person who lives in, in Tacoma Park. So they leave, they rent a unit, it established, it, and it's newly constructed condo, they establish a new base year rent for it. They come back, they live in the house a couple more years, so after five years, they sell it. When they sell that, they're going to think of it as an individual unit. They're going to come under the other law that we passed about disclosing the rent because now, even though that's an individually owned property, it has a rent year tied to it in perpetuity or until the law changes again. And that's, I think, going to be an education point for our, our real estate group because they're not going to expect that.
You know, I try to resist, but I can't help but put my foot in this quicksand.
I wish I could because I do it all the time.
And maybe we're focusing on too narrow a slot here, but, you know, again, I pick on Mr. Wasser, his building.
I use that just as an example because I could think of his name without his building.
What better person to pick on than Mr. Wasser? We're, we are going to base things on building, not on owner. But a unit that is still owned by Mr. Wasser would work off of the rents from when they were rental units, because they're still rental units, but those units in the same building who were owned by a different person that are now renting them out would be based on a different calculation. Is that what you're saying?
Do you want to?
I, I don't think yes, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, my reaction, one, you've got a really, you know, complicated situation when you're, you know, regulating rents of individually owned condos.
Yeah.
But, and the thing that I would think, I mean, maybe one all, I would think normally, let's say if it's been, they've been rental units, the building's converted, there've been capital improvements, well, under a fair return formula, the capital improvements would be considered as an additional expense. So, you know, the base rent.
But capital improvements don't include things that would be considered gentrification items, right?
Not the, not the conversion fees, for example. You could, I mean, and I understand the issue you're raising, especially, let's say, units that are owner occupied for a while, become rental, you could have a provision that if a condo is owner occupied for a certain period, that then a new base rent could be set. You could have that kind of provision because when you have balanced competing interest, on one hand, you know, if somebody owns eight units just as an investment, do you want to let them take that out from rent control? And on the other hand, you have other units that, you know, are basically, they're the principal residents of somebody, they're not an investment.
All right, I, I appreciate your answer. I think, I'm going to pull my foot out of the, out of the quicksand at the moment. I think it sounds like that needs to be thought through some more and, and there's some differing opinions and maybe something will come back to us for consideration. Is that what you see, Ms. Daines?
Yes.
It sounds like this can, this is, you're anticipating this is something.
That would be addressed during the regulations.
That would be addressed in the regulations rather than in the ordinance.
Right.
Oh, so we would just, as council members, wouldn't have to worry about that?
Well, unless you don't say to worry about the regulations.
Okay, let's, let's back up. I'm, I'm still bedazzled by the public hearing we had tonight. We had a lot of people show up and I heard a lot of, a lot of things that seemed to be, as somebody pointed out in the discussion, a lot of landlords here tonight, not many of the tenants actually got up and spoke. Did we send out letters letting the landlords and the tenants know that this, this public hearing was going to be tonight? So we sent a letter to all the?
We did not do a direct mailing to each individual tenant. We did to the tenant associations, they were distributed by Roseanne and Mario, there was a notice in the newsletter.
And you said distributed, distributed to the doors in the individual units? What do you mean distributed flyers?
There, there were particular areas, you know, rental, rental units where, where flyers were individually distributed. Most of the announcements went to the tenant, they already were the tenant associations that we have on our list and, you know, through our letter.
So you, so what you said is you notified the tenant associations, where you have a tenant association on file, and in some areas you actually flyer to the units of individual tenants?
Right.
But you did a postal mailing to all the landlords?
Yes.
Many, many of them don't live in.
Many of them don't live in the community.
Be hard to flyer them.
We did send out notification to all the condominium owners as well.
Okay.
With the, with the landlords, because they don't live in the community, they don't get a copy of the newsletter, which is also one of the ways that we publicize the, the public hearings, not only Tacoma Park, but, or for the rent stabilization, but all of the public hearings.
Okay, maybe I'm less surprised then that we had more landlords tonight than tenants. Flyers typically don't get as much notice and I'm not sure that a lot of people read the notices in the newsletter. And I had a question on capital improvements and trying, trying to see how a scenario would work with the new legislation as compared to the old. If, if I were a landlord and a refrigerator in, in a unit burned up and I had to go buy a new refrigerator, under the current law, would that be a capital improvement?
Under the current or the proposed?
Under the current.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So it, it seems to me like.
Unless, of course, you've replaced a refrigerator before, because you can only replace it once. So if you'd owned your property for 20 years and you burnt out your refrigerators, you would get it counted the first time that you replaced it and filed a capital improvement petition. But if it burnt out another 10 years down the road, you would not be able to apply again to replace that particular refrigerator.
That's because the rent increase for the refrigerator is built into the rent from that point forward and the idea is that after you replace the first refrigerator, the rent increases enough to cover that refrigerator and any refrigerator that's purchased to replace it.
But, but the rent before wasn't enough to?
Well, that, that was, that was the rationale for the capital improvement increase and I think that's actually one of the reasons that we are doing away with the capital improvement increase.
And that, and that limitation, if you would, would apply to carpet repla, currently would apply to carpet replacement, painting of bill, or units. You ended up having to replace some system more than once, you would really only be able to count it.
So that's for the, the life of the building or the life of the owner?
Life of the building.
Life of the building. Okay, so it's, it's the first time since rent stabilization was put in years ago?
Correct.
And, and how is that handled, how will that be handled under the new order?
Okay, that would be treated as an amortized cost. It would be considered in the context of the overall income and expenses for the building. So it would, it would be one more cost replacing the refrigerator, but it wouldn't be considered in isolation.
Okay.
So in reality, if somebody had a job that small, you know, they wouldn't get it, they wouldn't petition for a rent increase just for that item. They'd petition for a rent increase if their net operating income is not going up according to the fair return standard.
Okay, but if they went out and replaced all the appliances and all the units?
That would be an amortized cost.
Even though they had done that five years ago, that would be a new amortized cost that they could increase the rents for that.
Not necessarily. It would depend on whether it affected their net rate. It would depend on whether it affected their net rate of return. I mean, if I, if I, can I just say this, the way I understand it, you look at the base year, you look at their income, which is rents.
Right.
And you look at their costs, which is whatever.
Right.
And then you look at current year, you look at their income, which is rents, and you look at their costs, including refrigerator replacements and holes in the wall and replacing the roof and whatever they have. And in each case, you look at the, the difference between the two, right?
Right.
Which is your net operating income. And that is supposed to increase by a certain percentage each year, which is what we talked about, the percentage. And if it hasn't, if the net operating income, the difference between income and expenses in base year and income expenses in current year, if that difference hasn't increased by the specific ratio we're talking about, then they get an increase up to the point where it does meet that standard. Right? Is that, is that a grossly oversimplified view?
No, but let's, yeah, let's say they put $200,000 into appliances.
Right.
That's amortized at some rate. Let's say hypothetically, it's $20,000 a year. So when they listed their expenses, on the list of expenses, there'd be a $20,000 entry for those appliances.
Okay.
And that would, so when you added up their, figured out their income, you know, you take the gross income and you subtract all the expenses, now, you know, to figure out what they're.
Well, their gross income is only changing by the amount that they're allowed to increase by each year.
Right, right.
And if they're making significant improvement such as that, then they would be allowed to increase their, their rent.
Right, and if their net operating income is not going up by a specified rate.
Yes.
Keep in mind that the cap, however, in terms of the amount of the rent increase that would be permitted for any specific unit during any individual year, is still set at 15%, which is what it is now. So if, for some reason, the fair return, the commission makes a decision that, based on operating, or based on the income and expenses of a property, that they warrant a 20% increase in rent, it would not happen all at one time. It would have to be phased in over a period of at least two years.
Okay, and then last, I would just like to address Mr. Hess's three questions. And I would just say that I am a landlord, I have a single family house that I rent out. I think that, first of all, I find it difficult to answer the questions because it would disclose personal information about my tenant and I think that's unfair. But I will leave it to this and I'm certainly willing to talk to you in private about this, but I think you would be disappointed with my answer because I'm a do-gooder and I also don't use my position as a landlord for income. So I don't think it would, it would meet your desires, even if you did, even if I did answer the question.
Can I make a couple of suggestions moving to the council in terms of things we might look at moving forward? One of them is, I guess, Colleen and I don't agree on everything, but actually, I agree on the position that she took in terms of the, the increase for the net operating income for the current year of the base year. And I think 70% makes more sense than 50% also. I understand that it is a policy issue, but I think for a variety of reasons, that the 70% is, it, it's not exactly the same as the increase that we allowed for the proportion of the CPI. I understand the two rationales are not the same, but I do think 70% makes sense for a variety of reasons. The second thing that I would put on the table for the council is that I agree with your suggestion to allow property owners who purchase the property since 2000 to use the year, and I think it would be the year before rather than the year after as a base year, but only for those people who purchased property after the year 2000. I think that makes a certain amount of sense. And I had one more thing here. Which I can't find at the moment. What about those two? Yes. Would, is, is the count, would the, what does the council think about making those two changes?
I agree with the, using the, if property is purchased recently, using the year before it's purchased, if it's after 2000 as a, as a base year, but there may be additional wrinkles that'll end up in regs about exactly how this all works out, as Sarah was indicating. So I, I think it's a, you know, good idea, but there may be additional details we have to work on. On the 50% versus 70%, I think it's definitely something worth looking into, seeing what, seeing some examples, seeing what difference it makes, yeah?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I, my reaction is, and when I say it's a policy, this is not saying that in a negative sense, you know, I'm saying, I, you know, I can present some hypotheticals to you, and the one thing you should understand is, I mean, this will have some impact, and I'm not saying that's wrong, you will get, there'll be more incentive to file fair return petitions.
I understand.
And I'm not saying that's wrong, just so you know that, though.
Right, no, I, I am sensitive to the concern that, that some of our property owners have said that in recent years, their costs have gone up so fast that they have not been able to operate their property. I've had, you know, people say that to me individually, people have said that in the public hearings, that this is something, I mean, in the, in the 16-plus years that I've been on the council, we've had rent stabilization that whole time. And there have been, in that 16 years, property owners who've come to us and said the whole system was about to fall apart because they couldn't possibly make any money off their properties, and they've said that every year for 16 years. So I, I don't think there's a crisis right now, which is different than the situation has been for a while. I, I am sensitive, however, to the concern that people have brought to us of increasing utility expenses and other kinds of increases since we instituted the 70%, which was in 90, 92. So I, I do understand that issue, and I understand that if we make the percentage higher, that we will, in all likelihood, get more petitions under the fair return proposal, petition proposal. But I think that it's a, it is a reasonable way to balance the conflicting concerns that we are hearing from people. The concerns of the property owners that they can't, of some property owners that they can't possibly make money on their properties, but at the same time, the concerns the tenants have is that rents be kept to a rate that we can continue to provide affordable housing for people across the income spectrum. And I think that that's a, that's one of the ways that we've been doing that. The purpose of what we're trying to do here is to provide affordable housing and therefore provide an opportunity for our community to continue as it is now, as a very income diverse community. And that's, I think, the ultimate goal, to preserve this very income diverse community. And in order to keep people of diverse incomes in the community, you have to provide housing opportunities at a diversity of income levels. I think that for the lower income residents of our community, rental opportunities are basically all they've got, and maybe even for some middle-class people with the way property, new purchase prices are going. And so I think that that's the purpose of rent stabilization. On the other hand, I am sensitive to some of the concerns that people have brought, that they be allowed to operate their buildings in a way that they can make money. And I think that the 70% will, and I'd love to see the examples, and I, also, any additional information that the staff can bring to us, I think would be very helpful to me. But I think that that might be a rate at which we can make the fairest sort of middle ground on that. I just wanted to see, did you have anything else to?
No, I, I do want to support one thing you said very strongly, which is, I think that the fair return petition process is a better process than what we had before. I think focusing on a net operating income as a thing to think about rather than specific items like capital improvements and hardships didn't work very well. And a fair petition will more directly address the issue that was raised by landlords, that they cannot make it. If they can show that they cannot make it, then they have grounds for a fair return petition. It seems like a very straightforward, direct way to address a concern that was widely shared by landlords. And I talked to the housing folks about doing some educational sessions later to explain how to go through that petition process, and I assume they'll develop materials on, you know, what, what records are needed and all the other details of how it will happen. So I actually really am, despite concerns that it seems complicated, I did not find this particular fair return petition process to be particularly complicated. I thought the formula was quite simple, frankly, and I'm very glad to see it.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is the question that Mark Hessel asked us to answer, I believe, was it whether or not we believe it's fair for a landlord to shoulder the burden of, of our affordable housing policy?
Essentially.
I think that what we have been talking about is really, you know, it is falling to the landlords to pay for our affordable housing policy in the city. The city doesn't pay for it really because we're not giving landlords a property tax, you know, break or anything like that. And I wonder if tying this fair return petition process, you know, if it is determined that the landlord does need relief, then are we proposing that the tenant be the one to provide that relief, or wouldn't it make sense for the city to also be putting some money in that pot, like maybe through some property tax relief?
I've never, I mean, one, I think you raise, you know, sort of broad philosophical issues, maybe not intentionally. I've never seen the city do that, but one of the things, I mean, I, you know, I recommended a full CPI, because, you know, if you look in most of the country where there's not such a, let's say, a land shortage relative to the population, historically, the rents have gone up by the CPI. You know, they've been similar rates of increase, and I'm not talking about the areas with tight land markets, the East Coast and the West Coast, and landlords haven't gotten capital improvement increases in those regions, and they haven't gotten this and they haven't gotten that. They've gotten, you know, CPI increases in the rent, and the market has survived that way. And what happens is here, you don't really have a market, you know, you hear talk about returning to a free market. The supply of housing is heavily, heavily regulated in a lot of ways that we don't even think about because it's part of the landscape. The percentage of land you can build housing on is very limited, the density is very limited, you know, for public policy reasons, and I'm not saying that's wrong. It's not a free market. You go out to Texas, Arizona, there's a free market, and it's much tougher on landlords than rent control. There are a lot of building failures, there are high, sometimes there are 20% vacancy rates, owners losing buildings in foreclosures. We don't have a free market. The supply is regulated, and you could even say the demand is regulated. Somebody can't say the rents are too high, I'm going to stop renting and, you know, live in a tent this summer. So it's not free market, and, you know, so I mean, on one hand, you, you know, I believe, you know, the policy is you want to allow a fair return, and I think that, you know, 70% has been tough on the owners because, you know, a large part of it's been sucked up just by the operating cost increases and maybe more than, they've exceeded even that. And, but you want something sort of a reasonable substitute for that, which I think is the CPI. And the fair return process, it's, you know, it's sort of the best possible, but it's not totally, you know, it's not a simple thing. You'll get debates about expenses in those hearings and what should be amortized, what's reasonable and this and that. But hopefully, when people go, they go for the fair return process once, they get up to a fair return level, and then they get the CPI increases after that, which will always keep them at the fair return, and they won't have to come back again. And hopefully, the utilities analysis should answer a lot of questions, because we know utilities have gone way, way up, but we don't, we need hard data on how that compares with the rental income. You know, because if you double the water cost, it might be a tiny part of the rental income, but, you know, other utilities are expensive. And you're sort of, I see this as sort of trying to go through a transition where there'll be a bump because of, you know, complexity in one way because of the fair return process, but on the other hand, over the long run, this will, you know, work better. And I'm not saying we'll stop condo conversions, because that's a different thing.
Following on that same thought, the use of incentives to both create and maintain affordable housing stock included in places such as this area where you do have limitations on the increase of that stock, you know, not unknown, including the federal government and use of income tax credits or, or rebates or reductions for landowners or, or housing providers as a way of providing that incentive. So do you feel that in some ways, you know, we may be attacking or arguing passionately with each other here, but one possible tool in the tool chest is to look to the state and federal government to provide some of those incentives for maintaining and creating affordable housing?
I, I guess I have the opposite. You can do that, but my reaction is the world around you and the bigger picture, you, you can't do anything about, and it's fairly rigid, so you, you have to operate, you know, in those realities.
Are you familiar, though, with, with those tools and do you have a view of their, their value?
Well, I could, I could give a long speech.
How about a short one?
I feel like it'd help, but you, you need a basic policy shift in this country where the emphasis on what the national budget was spent on would have to change. But I'd also see, you know, to change the land use controls to allow a higher density would be a basic policy shift, you know, in the U.S., and that's not something that's going to, you know, happen.
I mean, that's actually one of the things that the county is considering is a, well, is they, they have as one of their options, allowing developers to increase density and return for creating affordable units.
But, yeah, I get, that, that's still a drop in the bucket.
Yes, I understand it's a drop in the bucket.
We, we have that in California.
Yes, I know, and one of the, one of the issues, as long as we're doing global, one of the issues is that Montgomery County is finding it very, very, very difficult to create new affordable housing, even what they call workforce, workforce housing, which is not, not as affordable as low and moderate income housing. And we have all this affordable housing here that we are simply trying to maintain, and the cost of maintaining a unit of affordable housing is infinitely less than the cost of trying to create a new unit. And it's just, it doesn't make sense to let go of what we have when the cost of trying to create new units is so unbelievably expensive.
The, the point I was trying to make was that the city is actually not maintaining the affordable housing. The landlords are, they're implementing our policy. And I think that if the city were a true stakeholder in this, we would be, you know, losing or gaining money based on our policy, and right now, we're not. One thing that was very compelling tonight, and I, I did see a lot of renters here, so I, I know that they were represented, I know they are interested in the outcome of our discussions, but the issue was raised as to whether landlords and tenants have sat down with you as you've developed this legislation. And they really are the stakeholders in this discussion. Many of us up here have rented and maybe even been landlords, but I wouldn't say that we're the, the main people this is going to impact. And I would really like to see the, the people this is going to impact discussing the, the details and making sure this is the best fit for our community. and making sure this is the best fit for our community. I'm, I'm actually not going to be in town next week for the meeting where this, I'm assuming will come up for first reading. I will go on record to say I don't think it's quite there yet. I think there are many good things where you've streamlined processes that we had that were redundant. It, it sounds like you're recommending the 100% of CPI, even though there's some discussion on the dais about making it 70%?
Those are actually two different issues.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I remember when we started this process with you, Dr. Barr, and you made a proposal, you said it should be accepted, you know, in toto, instead of each piece being kind of picked apart, and, and I appreciate that. But I do feel that if you look at who is paying for rent stabilization and who is benefiting, it's unclear who's benefiting. You could say tenants, but tenants are very diverse. And you have some tenants who may need it, and others who don't need it. But it's clear that who's paying is the landlord. And I'm not sure that this gets to the reform that this council did seem to want to address as we recodified. It does streamline a few things, and then other things are problematic. It, it doesn't make any sense to me that we would be broadening rent control to cover other, other units that are not currently covered. I don't remember taking an actual vote or a straw vote on that, but I do remember us saying from the get-go that that wasn't part of our intention. So I don't envy you your, your vote next week. I, I hope that the council does see fit to review some of these issues before moving forward.
Colleen, answer.
Well, I'm going to answer Mr. Hessel's four questions as well, but I'm going to start with number four, which was, what would I do after I?
I had three.
Well, he actually had four. What would you do after you started losing money? And I'm a landlord. I own a single-family home in another community. And while I would have liked to have purchased a place in Tacoma Park, I intentionally did not even look at places in Tacoma Park, because Tacoma Park has rent control. I'm a city planner by trade, and I, I'm not a supporter of rent control. The question, should landlords pay? You'd probably be surprised to hear that my answer is actually yes. It's just, I don't think they should pay in the way that we're currently asking them to pay. I think it's perfectly acceptable for the rental housing market to provide for affordable housing. I think it's perfectly acceptable to ask our homeownership market to pay for affordable housing for purchase. And then we might actually really be a community that welcomes folks into the community, not just as renters, but also some hope for homeownership in this community as well, which our current affordable housing program is not providing. So I think that there are other mechanisms that we could use so that the rental housing market itself paid for folks. Is it fair? The current system, I think, is not fair, because we're essentially asking landlords to transfer out of their pockets money for folks, whether or not they need the money. So is it fair that, that maybe you have a couple that lives in a place, and they earn $80,000 a year, and they pay $900 a month in rent, while you have somebody else who makes $30,000 a year and pays, it sounded to me like, 75% of their take-home pay for rent? No, that's not fair. And we don't have a mechanism here to address that kind of disparity. So the third question, should everybody pay? Yeah, I think everybody should pay a little, and not just a small group of people. I'm glad that we're making forward progress, and I, although some of the conversations have been combative, I actually really appreciate how much energy everybody has put into this project, the other council people and the staff. And, and we had an affordable housing forum, there was support from the mayor, the mayor came and brought the state senator, and there was support from other folks on the council who helped pull that together. I think there's an interest and a dedication, and I really appreciate all the tenants who came out and spoke, and all of the landlords who came out and spoke. I, I guess I agree with Joy that I think we're, you know, we're not quite there. I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the impact that these changes are going to have. I guess I'm, I'm a little worried about the unknown and unintended consequences. And I will not be here next week, because I'm going to the family reunion that we only have once every?
This is the change in the?
Two years. And, but I will be here for the final vote, so, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to go back. Earlier tonight, I heard unintended outcome, and I was surprised. Now I'm no longer surprised, so I can't call it unintended anymore. If we do it, it's something we knew about. But I'd like to know a little bit more information about it. And I wonder if, Sarah, if you would be able to tell us next week, how many units or buildings that we're talking about that are going to roll under the rent stabilization law, that are currently not under rent stabilization because of the changes in the ordinance?
Do you want that separated out by condominiums versus other units?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I think the condominiums are, I think it's a different issue.
Do you have it, that one?
Wait to finish going through. We will do our best. Because a lot of that will be based on the applications that we've gotten for the rental, or the rental housing licenses, and not all of that information has come back. But we'll give it to you based on the information we have.
Thank you.
I still haven't gotten a response to my suggestions to the council, except from Ruben, about those two changes to the draft that we've got. I guess I would, based on Dr. Barr's comments, I would leave the 50%, 70%, 100% increase in the net operating income standard. I'm agreeing with Dr. Barr about the 100% in the annual CPI increase in rents. We're talking about how you much you index net operating income each year to come up with your new standard that the property owner has to be above in order not to be eligible for a rent increase. You've got 50% in the, in the draft. I'd like to see your discussion of 50 versus 70%.
Sure.
And I would be willing to leave that open. But it seems to me that the issue of allowing people who've recently purchased property to use a base year since 2000 is a reasonable change to the law. Would there be administrative problems with it, Sarah? Okay. And I don't know of a reason why we shouldn't put it in, so let me say, is there anybody who has an objection to doing that? Actually, I would bet that the property owners who've purchased property since 2000 would be very glad to see it in there. The, I wanted to just take a minute to talk about the issue about, gee, there's, there's still some things in here that we don't know exactly what the outcomes are. The council has spent a fair amount of time talking about rent stabilization. As a matter of fact, every time we have a public hearing, there are people who say, gee, you've spent a long time talking about rent stabilization, and people who say, gee, you're moving too quickly. So I think at some point, we do have to come to the end of this process. And I would very strongly encourage the council to come to the end of this process prior to the council recess, both because that gives us some hope of having the change in the law applied prior to the end of the calendar year, and also because I'm afraid if we let it go over the recess, that this is such a complicated and convoluted area that we'll forget some things, we'll have to backtrack a little bit, go back and remember all of the things that we did and why we did them, and then we'll be spending some additional time. I am very much in favor of our getting out on the table, all of the concerns that we have, and looking into them, and getting as much information on them as we can. However, if the standard is that we won't pass anything unless we completely understand everything that could possibly happen, we won't ever pass anything. And I think we have been as exhaustive in looking at this issue as I've seen us do with any issue that we've had before us in a long time. And I think we should just move forward. We should ask any questions we want. We should make sure that we've got enough evidence in front of us and enough information so that we are comfortable with the decisions that we're making. But I think we will never, on a piece of legislation as complicated and as important as this one, we will never totally foresee everything that's going to happen. And so I think at this point, we just, you know, ask our questions, get the information, and make a decision. And I also expect, and I also want to thank everybody who came out. I spoke during the break to some tenants who were very interested in the outcome of our discussions this evening, but who didn't want to get up and speak, because they felt somewhat intimidated by these circumstances, and felt that they wouldn't be as articulate as some of the property owners. And I do understand that. And it reminds me that one of the obligations, I think, that we and the council have is to stand up for the people who are less able to stand up for themselves. And I appreciate the concerns that the property owners have brought to us. I am trying to think of ways to address some of those concerns. I really don't want us to be, you know, putting property owners, property owners in a position where they can't make money on their properties. But I do feel a stronger obligation to the tenants, because I do feel that they're less able to represent their own interests than the property owners are. And I think that what we've got in front of us is fair. I think we've spent a lot of time talking about the interests of one party versus another party. I think when you're, and actually, when we first started talking about rent stabilization years and years and years ago, the hearings were much more lively than the ones we've had now, with both sides making far more extreme statements. And I think people, and I appreciate the property owners who stood up and expressed concern and interest for their tenants, and the tenants who stood up and expressed sympathy for their landlords. I think that's a, that's a good step in the right direction. But I think we're never going to come up with any law on this issue. It involves the livelihood, the income of one party, and includes the ability of another party to keep a roof over their heads. Both of those things are very strong concerns of any individual, and you're never going to get to a point where there's going to be complete agreement. I think the law we've got in front of us serves the purposes that we set out. It is simpler, not perfectly simple, but it is a lot simpler. I think conceptually, it's a lot easier to explain. It is fair, I believe, and it addresses the concerns that we've had to maintain a diverse community by income, by race, by ethnicity. And I think this is about as good as we're going to do, and it's far superior to what we have now, which has sort of gotten changes and modifications to it over the years, and each one well-intended. But after a while, it starts looking like a, you know, a Christmas tree or something that's sort of been the camel put together by a committee. So I think this is much better than we have now. I think we should go ahead, look at whatever we need to look for, ask the questions that we need to ask, get the information that we need to get, the data that we need to get. And I think we should, we should pass this ordinance and, you know, make a better, fairer process that I hope, and I, and I really believe is going to be fairer to both landlords and the tenants than what we have now. Any other thoughts? All right.
Is it possible to ask a question of the gentleman about the application of?
Why don't you wait till after the meeting and ask him, okay? Rather than doing it right at the moment. I think the council, if I'm reading the council correctly, is ready to move forward. I understand there's some people who just disagree with the whole function of rent stabilization, but people are ready to move forward with this piece of legislation. And so we will put it on for first reading next week. If you have any other thoughts, I think getting them to the staff would be a good idea, and I anticipate we will have a discussion of this and impeachment next week, so.
Did you have a question, Sarah?
I just wanted to clarify to make sure that I have, that my notes are complete. As far as bringing back additional information to the council for the meeting next week, you're specifically interested in getting a couple of examples of what the impact would be if the?
The adjustment for the?
The adjustment from a 50% to a 70%.
Well, no, the adjustment under a 50% standard.
For the fair return.
For the indexing of net operating income.
And then also, compilation of the information that we have regarding the units or rental facilities that could be impacted by?
Could be newly brought under rent stabilization.
Newly brought into the?
Yeah.
There will be some additional minor revisions to this as we go through and look at it again with some fresh eyes, to make sure that the language is as clear as we can make it, and that it addresses some of the issues that were raised by the group, and the consensus appeared to be reached.
Okay, right. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for your patience. And I'm sure we will have another interesting discussion next week. We're adjourned.